...nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just to let everyone know that if you have friends at home tonight, we are live streaming for our second meeting instead of being on tape. And your friends at home can actually see you in the audience. So it's kind of no way. So we have a consent counter to approve. Can I get a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Off to that. Okay. So we have recognitions and presentations. And today, we're going to proclaim November 2nd, 2016 as Shelter-in-Place Education Day. And this is for public and private schools and childcare centers throughout Contra Costa County. They'll all be participating in Shelter-in-Place Drills on November 2nd, which will, you know, help make our children safe in case of an emergency, whatever. So that's a great kind of thing that we're doing. And we don't have somebody to receive this tonight, so I'm going to give this to my clerk, and she will take care of that. And the best part, we have certificates of recognition to public school students exemplifying do the right thing, character of respect. And we have two recipients of that today. And do we have the principal, Dawn? Is Dawn here? Dawn, okay, there you are. I didn't mean to call you, so that I can see you person. Come on, come on, right up here, right up over here. In front of that camera. Hi, pleasure. I started dialing you three times. So we have, we do the certificates of recognition to children that do the right thing. And we divide it into four parts. These two months are respect. And so we have two students to call up. And we're going to call up Carter Dudley. Can you come up, please? So would you like to say a couple of things about Carter?
I actually think it'd be more appropriate for his teacher to say a few things. I'm going to invite up Mrs. Pike.
Well, we would like to recognize Carter. He exemplifies all the character traits. But for respect, he comes to school every day, ready to learn. He's so respectful, not only to me, his teacher, but to his fellow classmates. Every day, he uses polite language. He always tries his best. He's so courteous to his classmates by listening attentively when they have something to say and sharing his opinions as well. And just being a role model for all the students in our classroom. Thank you so much, Carter, for all you do every day.
So Carter, because of this and this great personality trait that you have, the City of Clayton wants to give you a certificate of recognition honoring you, Carter Dudley, for doing the right thing at Mount Diablo Elementary School by exemplifying great respect. Hold on to that, okay? You stay here too, okay? One, two, okay, let's get up our next student, okay? And we have Elva Levasolano. Ooh, Eva, I'm sorry. So would you like to tell us all about Eva?
I would actually love to invite Eva's teacher, Mrs. Knapp.
Eva was nominated. She not only exemplifies all of the life skills we teach at our school, but she's very respectful to her friends, to all the teachers and classmates. I've seen her at recess, be very respectful to the equipment, to her friends in various games. So she has just done a fabulous job.
So Eva, the City of Clayton would like to give you the certificate of recognition honoring you, Eva Levasolano, for doing the right thing at Mount Diablo Elementary School by exemplifying respect for October 2016. Want to get pictures? Just the kids?
Just the kids, thank you.
Okay. So we keep the kids? Yes, they do. Keep waving.
Okay. Be a good smile. Good grab.
Don't follow kids or dogs, isn't that? One of the best things that we can do out here, part of the job that I just love, when we can recognize our children. And thank you, teachers and principal. I mean, it's really great that every, all of our principals and teachers, you know, really grabbed onto this program that Hank Strachey brought on and Councilman Deep Shuey has continued. It's just a great program, you know, for our students, our community, because I think they teach our parents also, so that's a good thing. So, thank you. So at this point of the program, we have reports. We have Planning Commissioner Basan Matwal. Hey, there you are.
Good evening. So on Tuesday, the 25th, we had a pretty long meeting, actually, three and a half hours meeting. We have three items, we had three items on our agenda. One of them was general plan amendment, and I'll go in detail for the 555 Clayton Road, it's the San John Church. Another item is a study session for another general plan amendment to allow acreage density calculations, and I'll go some of it. And the third item was the zoning ordinance regarding the water conservation that is coming from the state. So to make things short, we had lots of public participation, lots of public in that meeting, especially the first plan amendment, which was a study for a negative mitigation declaration, general plan amendment, rezone development plan, tentative parcel map plan, and the three mover permit. Basically, that area, if you look at that area, which is a parking lot, there is a lower area by six feet, which is .41 of an acre. And they asked to divide it and rezone it to a BR12, which is the only residential rezoning that it can fit. It was our view, we reviewed it, we asked lots of questions, and we thought it will really match better with the housing around it. And it's actually geographically was split, so. And the change of zoning for the area of the remaining two acres from agriculture, and I mean, we all agree that agriculture on Clayton Roads does not exist. And after long discussions, we discussed the designs, the basic designs of the houses, actually in details, the height of the houses. I just want to mention, by the way, Commissioner Richardson recused himself from that meeting because he lived in the area. And Commissioner Gill was absent, I think with excuse, from that meeting. So it was left for three commissioners to make that decision. And we passed it, or everybody passed it, and it's going to come in three weeks, I think, to your review with much more details, I mean, this much detail. So you're going to read about it. As for the second, the study session, it's actually basically was 98% of the land of Clayton is already developed. There's like 2% of the land left. And those, there's lots of geographical issues with this 2% of the land left. And staff recommended this study session to, for the acreage density with the idea of, instead of calculating the buildable area based on the full size of the land, to calculate it based on the area of developed size of the land. And since it's only 2%, and that will allow that land to be developed. Otherwise, that land, or whichever land, will not meet the standards for the zoning or the acreage. And this is a study, and it will help staff, and we approved it unanimously to allow staff to bring that study further and study it more. And again, there was lots of participation from public on that item. They said their peace of mind, and it made sense, by the way, and we agreed on it. The third item was, literally, it's a zoning ordinance to amend chapter, Title 17 from Zoning, Chapter 17.80, for the Clayton Municipal Court to revise the landscape water conservation standards to comply with the changes to the state law. So basically, the state law has all these conservations laws passed, and we have to meet them. But this amendment is basically for our staff to reduce the amount of work still meeting all the standards requested by the state. And we found that it made sense. We discussed it, and we approved it. And it's, again, it's going to come under, for your review in three weeks. And three and a half hour later, we were done. So I think that's it. If you have any questions for me?
Anyone have any questions? I have one question.
Go ahead.
So R12?
R12 is-
Residential. It's residential, we know that. Okay, so tell me the 12 stands for.
Well, most of the residential in the area, and correct me, where are R4?
Right.
And the R12 was, the Rs divided, it's basically on the size of the lots.
Right.
And the closest that we could get to the lot size was R12. Those two lots in the lower area of, were a little bit less than the R12. So that's why it came out to vote. It's around, let me see, the two lots, it's, one is .22 of an acre, and one is .19 of an acre on that area. It does have some challenges, some design challenges, which we thought that the developer really made them in a really good way. And, you know, being in the business myself, I was impressed with their presentation. They hid the parking away. It still sits a little bit high from the level. That's why they reduced the height to still meet the R12, which is 35 feet high from the street level. So basically, if it wasn't R12, there was nothing else that could fit that parcel. And even R12 was closest to that, to fit that parcel. Otherwise, we will end up with a parcel undeveloped, staying there forever, not being touched. And basically, we felt that developing those two lower parcels will really give that other neighborhood on the sides some kind of a character, because now it closes it out, and it looks like a neighborhood instead of just passing by and two empty pieces of land in the middle of the house.
Well, thank you for your detailed report, and welcome to the planning commission.
Thank you very much. All right, take care.
Looks like you're having fun. Little work. Okay, Trails and Landscaping Committee did not have a meeting, so we don't have a report. City manager and staff, I'm sure we have a great report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have two items for tonight. One is, there's been recent communication from the county clerk recorder's office of Contra Costa that because of the amount and volume of the presidential election, which also affects the local elections, the board of supervisors will not approve the canvas of the votes until their meeting on December 13th. And so questions have arisen, well, what does that do for Clayton? Does that push our reorganization meeting? Normally, the first meeting in December would be December 6th. Does that mean we must wait for that official vote to take place? And Janet, our city clerk, has been in contact with the county offices, and she received late this afternoon, typical of what we've done in the previous years of elections, is that on the day of your first regular meeting in December, which will be December 6th, she can drive down to the county clerk's office and actually get the results from the county clerk that he is submitting to the board, because they prepare that in advance, that far in advance for the agenda. And then she'll bring that canvas back, and we will still, so the result is, we will still have the reorganization meeting on for December 6th, your first regular meeting in December. So please calendar that accordingly. And that typically is just more of a ceremonial meeting, and we will not try to put any general plan amendments or other things on that particular item.
Thank you.
The second matter, the mayor, how do I, is it that one? The mayor indicated earlier, but just as a confirmation, we are live and now web streaming as this meeting is taking place. Individuals can go to the address at the top and sit in their pajamas and eat popcorn and not disturb us. You can yell and scream at the TV all you want, but we are glad to bring this update to everyone in terms of public transportation and public access. If you don't want to stream it live as it is right now, you can always go back into our city website and pick it up that way. I'm afraid that probably even the press will stay home now. They can just watch it. She didn't say no.
No, I saw her and go, yes.
That wasn't, that was not a denial, was it? So anyway, congratulations and our thanks to the council members for having this happen. It's just another outreach opportunity for people to stay in touch with their local government. And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City council reports, we'll start with Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of items. On the Saturday, the 22nd, I attended the United Professional Firefighters Local 12:30 Second Annual Ball and Auction, which was held in Wallona Creek at the Marriott Hotel, and they raised in excess of $20,000. And I was bidding on the Fire Station 11 gift, but I got outbid by the mayor of Arinda's husband by $5.
$5?
They cut it off at a certain time when we were running around trying to, it was a silent auction, but it was a lot of fun that night. But I thought it was a great night, because they had raised over $20,000, and it was to fund bicycles for children throughout the county. On the 27th, an organization I've been a part of for a number of years, we hosted our 23rd Annual Law Enforcement Appreciation Luncheon in Danville, and we honored in excess of a dozen and a half law enforcement officials and officers from throughout the entire Bay Area. Both Contra Costa, Alameda, and Santa Clara County attended that. We were all welcomed in Danville by her honor, the mayor of Danville, Erin Stepper. It was a surprise to have her there. Then later that night, I attended the CBCA Board Meeting here at Oakhurst. Then on the 29th, I went over to the Contra Costa County Fire District Protection District Open House, which was held at their training facility over on Treat, where they had a number of displays and other activities to show how to prevent fires in your house and in your businesses. And they displayed much of the new equipment that they have acquired, including a new hook and ladder and all their new emergency response vehicles for medical emergencies. And they were really promoting the fact that now AMR, American, yeah, American Medical Response are now under the Fire Department and the Fire District, and, which means that based upon their statistics, this has improved the response times throughout the county and their, the areas that they serve. And one thing that they did is, with this, they are now changing the coloring on the AMR vehicles. Right now, about almost 40% are now the red color of the Fire Department, and by the 1st of this year, they will have a complete changeover, and they will look just like they would be if they were part of the Fire District. And also, the Fire District is hosting another, or having another academy, which will bring them full, complete staffing by the end of, by the 1st of the year. And last but not least, Sparky the Fire Dog was there, and we all got to see him. Anyway, that's all I have.
So what did you get outbid on for $5?
Well, actually, it was a really nice, it was a foursome up at Oakhurst. It was a, not an entree-
That's golf, right?
Golf, but they also, and they had a, Maresi's Chop House donated a couple of, not entrees, but orders and a couple glasses of wine for a couple. And there were a couple of other things in there, but it was, I wanted it, but I got outbid by $5.
Yeah, well, next time. Julie?
I'm glad that Council Vice Mayor Diaz got outbid, because he's bringing new business to town that day, see? Went to somebody outside of town, and they'll have to come back once they experience our wonderful little burg here. So I attended a Contra Costa Transportation Authority Board Meeting. Also, the Association of Bay Area Governments Executive Board met since our last meeting here. Also had the honor of making a presentation at the Metropolitan Transportation Commission annual, or biannual awards breakfast last week on Wednesday. And I was able to, and it was really fun, as a previous recipient of a Women's Transportation Seminar, Woman of the Year Award, I was really pleased to be able to present an award back to them for their mentoring program, where they mentor young women going into the transportation field, and they take them as early as high school and give them opportunities to participate with other professionals and see what the transportation engineering kinds of programs are all about, and getting more women, young women involved in the field. So it was really an honor to be able to present them an award. And then we had our regular MTC meetings after that. Had a Transpac meeting on the 10th of November, and then again on the 20, what was it, 20-something? Anyway, of October, sorry. And we held two different interviews of prospective executive directors for the Transpac Board. The first one was interviews by the board alone, and the second one, two weeks later, was interviews by the tech members and the board. And we have narrowed it to a finalist, and we are in negotiations. So hopefully, by December or at the latest January, we will have a new executive director for Transpac. It has been two and a half years since we have had an executive director. So I will be very grateful for that, because I've been filling the gap. And then the next night, we had a, or next day, we had a joint Association of Bay Area Governments and Metropolitan Transportation Commission meeting to go over the progress on the merger between these two great regional agencies. And it was really, really wet last Friday. And if you remember, last Friday morning, there was a big rig that overturned on the Bay Bridge. Traffic was a nightmare. I was very glad I had decided to take Bart after all. It was the only form of transportation besides feet that were working in San Francisco. The streets were absolutely jammed, totally nonstop. Our deputy executive director got into the city from Narin and got stuck in traffic on Bryant, and he got stuck for 40 minutes in one spot, and eventually, staff had to walk out and sit in his car so he could walk back and be there in time for the meeting an hour and a half later. It was just a disaster. So thank goodness for Bart, I got there in a reasonable amount of time. Locally, I wanted to emphasize some things that I don't normally mention, all the committees that we have here in town, the volunteer things, but the Clayton Historical Society is doing some really wonderful things. And their most recent activity was they co-sponsored, along with Diamond Terrace, a Halloween party for the community. And they had a musical program, they had someone telling ghost stories, they had lots of spooky treats, little deviled eggs that looked more like eyeballs. And everyone had a fabulous time. And it was free for the community to come and be there. And those are some of the things that are kind of unsung by that group. One of the other things coming up, and as you know, I'm on the board for the Historic Society, so one of the things coming up, I'm going to do a blatant plug for the annual Christmas Homes Tour. We finally got enough houses, we could use one more if we get it, but we're having it anyway. And it will take place on December 11th from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. This is one of two big fundraisers for the Historic Society. And as you know, they occupy a space on city property and have for some time, and they are just tooth and nail trying to get that building to stay upright and do repairs. So this is one of the fundraisers to keep that building intact and honor our history in Clayton. So that's the last couple of weeks.
Thank you, Julie. Let's go to Keith.
Okay, not quite as busy as Julie on all of her different assignments, but did find some things to do in the time since our last meeting. On Wednesday, October 19th, met with the Clayton Library Foundation, I'm the council rep, and they talked about some needs that they had, and the city is addressing now. And also, we're happy to report a successful book sale that they had in October. And then on Monday, October 24th, we actually hosted a Habitat Conservancy meeting here in Clayton. And it was a short meeting. We basically funded some projects and approved a new year 10 fee audit to be conducted on the funding for the Habitat Conservancy. It's been very successful. Then last Tuesday, the 25th, Howard and I met with Kevin and went over the city audit review with the city manager as well. Very beneficial for us to go in and look at the detail of the audit that we'll be reviewing later this evening, and have the audit team present as well to walk us through. And then on the 26th, had the Oktoberfest wrap-up meeting. They had their most successful day ever, the Saturday of Oktoberfest. If anyone was downtown, it was hard to move around. Main Street was packed, very successful. And as you probably know, the CBCA puts that on. It's a major fundraiser for the club, raising all of their money to be put back into the Clayton community. They were co-sponsors of the Bachi Park. They've done a number of projects around town. They sponsor scholarships, they help sports teams, they do a lot of activities, charitable activities as well here in Clayton, and all that money goes back into those activities. And then this past Saturday, we had a Bachi clinic for new players who are going to be participating in a fall league that the Bachi League is sponsoring this year. And that is going to bring many new people downtown to Clayton. And that's been one of the really nice advantages of this Bachi League that plays on the Ipsen Bachi Park downtown. It brings a lot of people down to Clayton during the week, in the evening, which normally they're not downtown during the week. So that's been a real positive aspect of the park, as well as just getting many, many people to meet neighbors here in Clayton. So that's a real positive impact on our city. All right?
Mr. Shue.
I have really nothing to report.
Sure you do.
Some of you may have known, I had a family emergency, was not here at the last meeting. This is actually probably the first meeting or work that I've gone to in a while. I'm hoping to get back to my regular job soon, but I just, it, the only, well, not the only, but one of the great things about what has happened is, the community has been fantastic, and it's just further confirms that we live in a great city, and thank goodness for all friends and neighbors and even people that really didn't know us but reached out to help. So I just want to thank everybody, you know, helping us get through something. And other than that, I didn't do any city business, sorry.
Sometimes we just need to take care of our own, that's for sure. You know, and just give Shelley our best from all of us, I'm sure. Couple of things that I did, I attended the Contra Costa County Office of Education meeting here, a presentation by the Executive Board for the New Tech Charter School. And there's, they're working very hard to get a tech charter school started, which will go from 6th grade through the 12th grade, and this will cover, you know, high-tech subjects that are not being taught at high schools or at the younger grades, definitely. The key to the charter school and the, why they're coming about is because education seems not to be as relevant to current times as it needs to be. to current times as it needs to be, and it's slow to change. So, um, charter schools are, are, are making that change and they're moving a little bit faster. Uh, I thought that the, um, Contra Costa Office of Education, they, uh, accepted the presentation really well. Um, there's a couple more meetings that'll, that'll come to be and we'll see what happens on that. But, um, um, it's nice to hear. Um, that was one thing I did. I did attend, a couple of us also attended the CBCA meeting. Okay? Um, I think it was last Thursday. And, uh, it's always an invigorating meeting with lots happening for the community and, uh, um, all talked about, you know, how to give out that money that we, that we earned and worked so hard for. So if anyone out there has a nonprofit source that they think is worthy, maybe they can come forward and, uh, and we can see what we can do for them, you know, as the CBCA club can do. Um, another thing that I work on, um, I also was part of the audit review when I see the auditors out there. So I'm looking forward to, uh, chatting about that in a public session. Um, one of the things that I've done for the last eight years with my wife, uh, is that we, uh, became avid supporters of Christmas for Everyone. And Christmas of Everyone is an organization that helps thousands of people in the community. Um, and, um, they always look for this time of the year for donations of used clothing, new toys, new clothing, uh, funds to help the program. And they set up camp, uh, at a church on, in Concord. Um, and actually, uh, every kid that gets through gets a new toy. Um, we try to get a new coat to everybody. Uh, everyone gets a chance to shop for gently used clothing, which is really nice. But the best part of it is to watch everybody that comes is treated special and everybody that comes gets to have a Christmas dinner that probably they wouldn't have otherwise. Um, if you're, uh, infirmed, um, or you're homebound, um, if you're infirmed, we'll send a bus out there to actually pick you up and bring you to us. Uh, if you're homebound, we will actually bring a Christmas dinner to you, uh, as well as some warm throws and some things, you know, that you certainly will, will enjoy. Um, Debbie and I, uh, to make it easier on everyone else, we've opened up our house as a collection site in Clayton. Uh, so you can always, um, drop off at 252 Mount Air Parkway and, uh, we will take your stuff and bring it over there. Uh, we'll leave in supply receipts and stuff. So just call me and let us know that you're doing that. Um, and, um, we appreciate any, any help that we can get. Uh, if you have some time on Christmas Day, be a volunteer at Christmas for Everyone. I mean, I guarantee you will walk home feeling a better person. So that's it for me. Uh, we'll go from there.
Mayor, I had just really quickly regarding the Clayton Business and Community Association with the success of the events that they do. Uh, they're building up a lot of resources that you recall hearing. And the President, Bob Steiner, made a special, uh, point to ask people if they do have a worthy, um, cause that they're affiliated with to submit an application for, uh, funding, uh, for evaluation because they're looking to
Yeah.
give out some funds.
I mean, we're not just, they're not going to just give it out, but I mean,
No, they gotta review. They gotta review.
They have a rigor morall of going through that will, you know, make you want to say ouch. Okay. So on that, we're going to go to, um, presentee. Okay. We have city council candidates here tonight. So, um, if you'd like to get up and speak for three minutes, um, that is perfectly in line with what we do. Alan Lampert, would you be first? And you can go up to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, it's an honor to run for city council. There are many reasons to support me in this endeavor, but it mainly comes down to my past experiences and a desire to do more. In the past, I have been an assistant scoutmaster for the Clayton Boy Scout Troop 444, announced for Dana Hills Swim Team. My kids swam there for nine years, volunteered for Clayton Cleans Up, Clayton Art and Wine Festival, fundraising for St. Bonaventure Catholic Church, photography and other assistance for Clayton Valley Charter High School Music Boosters Relay for Life, 10 years on the Dana Ridge Homeowners Association Board, and as a financial advisor with John Hancock, I had a monthly article in the Clayton Pioneer. Um, I feel it is time for a fresh perspective and to bring new blood into our city council. Eight years ago, when I ran, we were trying to develop downtown with new merchants. Now there is a proposal being investigated, but I have other ideas. I suggest we take a lesson from Concord. Did you know that most new businesses, especially restaurants, fail in their first year? Last, uh, like Concord, I suggest we create a council and ask for the support of the CBCA that would help new businesses in how to get started, i.e. licenses, expected bills, inspectors' expectations, et cetera, and put out the word that we provide this service. Secondly, on the same lines, I have been in contact with the Contra Costa Association of Realtors. I have told them what we want and would like to recruit them for phase two of my plan. Look for a developer willing to search out successful business people that have one or two locations and entice them to open a small location in Clayton. I would like to look into tax incentives for their first year and building to their specifications. A Realtor in Concord did this for a family friend of mine, and he moved his restaurant, the El Morocco, with wonderful results. Lastly, Howard Geller has spearheaded the Concerts in the Grove. Um, and he is not running again. I have years of experience running nightclubs and at Abernathys and Wallon Creek, we had live rock and roll every night. I have hired top bands such as the Fundamentals, Train, and Starship. I'd love to bring my expertise to this activity and help it flourish as it has in the past. If you want to learn more about me, contact me at alanlamper@yahoo.com or go to votersedge.org/cow. And after enjoying all the benefits of living in Clayton, thank you for this opportunity to give back by serving on the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Jim Diaz.
Thank you. Uh, this is a very interesting yet exciting, uh, time for the candidates that are, uh, seeking office here in the, on the city council. Uh, to that end, uh, all of the candidates, the four vying for the, uh, three slots, all participated, uh, at the editorial board on the 21st of the East Bay Times, which is a rather vigorous, uh, inquiry into our qualifications and, uh, what our experiences have been and what we plan to, uh, bring forward to, uh, uh, continue what we enjoy here in Clayton. It was, uh, I thought was a very thorough and very, uh, intensive, uh, hour that we spent there going, uh, uh, from person to person, answering a variety of questions. And, uh, I thought, uh, we did all, all did a very good job in responding, uh, to that editorial board. Look forward to the campaign as it continues to wind down, which has only got seven days left, six, eight days left. And we'll see what the results are.
Thank you. Councilwoman Julie Pierce.
Sure. Um, I've been honored to serve the city of Clayton for quite some time and have been instrumental in many of the improvements that we've had take place in this city. And I'm very, all too familiar with the struggles we've gone through trying to get where we are. I was part of the fundraising effort to build the gym, which many of us take for granted out at the Diablo View Middle School. The Clayton Community Gym was a six-year-long project for us to raise the money in conjunction and get grants in conjunction with Mount Diablo School District. But if we had not done it, we would not have that gym because the school district had no interest in building it at that time. That was one of the things we did. I helped to design the Clayton Community Park as part of the Oakhurst Project. So I've been around a while, but we've also done some really good things. Worked hard with Howard and with Jim on the Concerts in the Grove, out there every single concert, passing the jug, trying to collect money to make sure that it's not a city expense. We've worked hard to get community businesses. And unfortunately, our city doesn't have the resources to give tax incentives. We have worked with some of the top professional commercial real estate people in the region for years to try to bring bigger businesses into Clayton. It doesn't work. We're the end of the line. So we are working on alternatives that bring businesses, community-serving businesses into our downtown that our city can support with the lower traffic that we have. And that's something that really fits our community far better than a lot of big businesses do. Believe me, we tried to get, excuse me, we tried several times to get a Trader Joe's. We're too small. We're too much off the beaten track. They don't want anything to do with us, nor do many of the chains. Um, a gas station would have liked to be down in our downtown, but we voted against that years ago. And so that was definitely off the list. So we're working hard to make our community the kind of a vibrant downtown that we all want and one that fits in with our community character. I'm active with the, uh, Clayton Historic Society. I'm on their board, have been for a long time, work on all their fundraisers, work on CBCA fundraisers, leading all of those kinds of things. Um, have been active in scouts with our kids, but now I'm working on things for our grandkids. And that's really a wonderful place to be. So, um, I would appreciate all your support. I am honored to have received an endorsement from the Contra Costa Times. My colleague did as well. Um, and we appreciate your vote next Tuesday or by next Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, just point of fact, I started the concerts before I got on the city council. And I'll be doing the council concerts after I'm off the city council. And, uh, we always had room for a volunteer. So anytime you want to step forward, please do so. Thank you. All right. We're going to go to, uh, public comments on not-agended items. Do we have anyone that would like to speak? Okay. We'll close public comments and open up public hearings. And since we have no public hearing, we're going to go to action items. Action item number 8A, consider the adoption of Urgency Ordinance Number 469, placing an interim local moratorium on the operation of or establishment of parolee homes and community supervised, supervision programs within the city of Clayton. With that, we'll move to Mindy.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, so just to summarize, the item for you tonight is an urgency ordinance placing a moratorium on both parolee homes and community supervision.
Your microphone on.
Sorry about that.
I think we're live now. Okay. Um, so this ordinance is really in response to AB 109, which went into effect on October 1st, uh, 2011. And that, um, bill ended up transferring the responsibility of supervising certain inmates and parolees from the state, uh, down to the counties. And in response to AB 109, the Board of Supervisors adopted the county's realignment program, which called for the establishment of community programs for employment support and placement services, mentoring and family reunification services, short and long-term housing access, and civil legal services. Uh, currently, uh, the type of support programs, uh, being provided by the community supervision program, um, which are again, programs provided to parolees and probationers, are not really defined within the Clayton Municipal Code. Um, therefore, these services could really be characterized as professional office uses, which are permitted by right in the limited commercial district as well, uh, on the second floor within the Town Center, uh, specific plan. Recently, the city, uh, received an inquiry from a county community supervision program service provider. And the inquiry was regarding the city's regulation for establishing, uh, residences for those that have been previously incarcerated. And while the intent of the program, um, is commendable, there are concerns regarding the, uh, recidivism rates, which could indicate these types of services and homes, uh, raise the potential for negative impacts to public health, safety, and welfare, uh, particularly if these parolee homes, um, and/or the community service providers were in a dense concentration, or if they were sited next to sensitive uses such as, uh, schools, um, or parks. Um, and the intent, um, of the moratorium is to not ban them, but to, um, allow the city the opportunity to study the appropriate locations, concentrations, and distances from sensitive uses, um, such as schools and parks, as well as to adopt operational, uh, requirements. Uh, it's expected that the moratorium will require a further time extension beyond the 45 days, as it's unlikely that staff will, uh, complete its analysis and preparation of the new regulations for consideration by, uh, review of both the Planning Commission and the city council, um, prior to that 45-day timeline. Uh, therefore, it's recommended the city council motion to have the city clerk read ordinance number 469 by title and number only in way of further reading, and motion to adopt ordinance number 469 to prohibit the establishment, construction, and operation of community supervision programs and parolee homes for 45 days. And with that, I'd happy to answer any question that the council may have.
Any questions up on the desk?
Yeah, I have, I have one. So, the urgency is, is, and what's the urgency? Because we have to comply with, uh, Assembly Bill 109, I suspect. But, um, we can only, uh, act on it for 45 days, which I guess admittedly you say is not going to be sufficient time for the staff to, uh, to act on it. We cannot go beyond the 45 days?
So essentially, the, the city has to respond to the county's, um, realignment program, which is the community supervision program.
Right.
And, um, so it's really the county that is, um, complying with state law for AB 109. But to answer, more specifically, to answer your question in regards to the timeframe, it's extended. Staff would bring back another ordinance to extend that timeframe, um, for 10 months and 15 days, which is the allowed timeframe done with an urgency ordinance.
And I would gather that there would be some definitive, uh, distance or, um, I don't know what word I'm looking for, but, uh, how far they have to be specifically from schools and other, uh, and other, uh, sensitive areas.
That would be the timeframe that we would need in order to study those particulars.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. With no other questions, I'll open up for public comment. Anyone would like to speak on that item? Seeing nobody, we're going to close public comment. And then I need a motion.
I would move to have the city clerk read the Urgency Ordinance Number 469 by title and number only in way of further reading.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I heard the second from Schuie.
Yeah. You jumped it.
Who said it?
Schuie, Schuie.
He gave, he gave your second in before that.
Say that five times. Fast.
Yeah, you missed it.
What?
No, not this. It's okay. It's all good.
It was urgently done, Mayor.
Yeah, it was urgently done.
Sensing the urgency, yeah.
Ordinance Number 469, an urgency ordinance making findings and establishing a temporary moratorium on the establishment and operation of parolee homes and community supervision programs.
I would move that we adopt Urgency Ordinance Number 469 with the finding that the adoption of this ordinance is not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act because CEQA only applies to projects which have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment, and this activity is not considered to be a project and can be seen with certainty that it will not have a significant effect or physical change to the environment.
Second. You got a motion and a second? Jimmy, you're slowing that one. Second, third. Yeah, okay?
I didn't, I didn't hear another second, or you did. He did.
Very quickly.
All of them. All in favor?
Yep. Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. We, we, from now on, seconds need to come from the gut guys, you know?
Very good.
Sounds much better. He can hear that. Okay. All right. We're going to go to, uh, item B, 8B, Presentation, the Approval of the City's Audited Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the CAFRA, for fiscal year 2015-16 by Krappa Accounting Corporation, Independent Sub, Certified Public Intendant Accountant Firm, uh, and, and Concept Direction Regarding the Disposition of, for year 2015-16, General Fund Excess Money of $200, $204,902. We're going to go to, um, the team. Let's go first to our team. Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor Geller, and, uh, members of the city council. So for the first time, I have exciting news tonight. For the first time, the city has taken the drafting of the financial statements of the city of Clayton fully in-house. And we've produced our first ever comprehensive annual financial report, which is also referred to as a CAFRA. So the CAFRA is prepared in accordance with Generally Accepted Accounting Principles, which are issued by the Government Accounting Standards Board. And it is a, is essentially a set of basic financial statements, which the city has done in prior years. However, it includes a much expanded introductory section as well as a 10-year statistical section in the back. The city's CAFRA has, as of today, been submitted to the Government Financial Officers Association, or GFOA, for review to receive their prestigious Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Award. And this award is for governmental agencies that go beyond the minimum requirements of Generally Accepted Accounting Principles to evidence the spirit of transparency and full disclosure. So if you turn to page one of the CAFRA, as we're referring to it as, uh, that is the Independent Audit Opinion Report, which includes an unmodified opinion, which in layman's terms is a clean opinion. So it's the, it's the good one. It's the one you want. So, and they'll explain what more in-depth that means as well. So at this point, instead of stealing the thunder from the auditors with an in-depth analysis, analysis, I would like to direct your attention to Mr. John Cropper, the partner for Cropper Accountancy Corporation, who has prepared an in-depth analysis and presentation for the city council this evening on the financial statements, as well as the results of their audit procedures. So thank you very much, John.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. And Honorable Mayor Geller and esteemed members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here to present your fiscal year 2016 financial statements. We, I'm here with my associate, with Bryce Rojas, who was a senior on the job, and as Kevin has mentioned, and this is not something that really we take lightly at all, as the Finance Committee met with us a week ago. We met with council member Keith Hayden and Mayor Howard Geller, and during those hours that we spent closely together with the city manager, Napper, and Kevin and Bryce, we, we went into the depth, in-depth analysis of what we were presenting. But the council has hired our firm, Cropper Accountancy, for, for one page, and that's, that's my thunder, that, that our finance manager, Kevin Mizuno, who did a wonderful job. That, that page one, the unmodified opinion, is, is our glory here, it's on our letterhead. But everything else, the financials this year, the CAFRA, the format from the GFOA, which encourages transparency, all that was done by staff this year. The significance of that, if you, you read your, closely your, your staff report, which I read that Kevin wrote, means that we have other, we have more time. There are three phases to an audit. The first phase is planning phase, second phase is fieldwork, and the third page, third phase is, is the putting together of the financial report. It's a very big report, and it takes a lot of time. So this year, because Kevin put all that time in there, you know, my review was quicker in that phase, there's time and energy involved in that. But the state of the city, so as Kevin mentioned, page one, we put the page numbers in here to help you. We'll just give you a brief overview, you can ask, ask any questions you like, but you have a clean opinion, an unmodified opinion. There's two sets of financial statements in governmental Post-Gasby 34, there's two sets of balance sheets and income statements, and they have different names, and it's somewhat confusing. But here, we'll go to the government-wide, and we'll look at page 20, go back to the other one. And you'll see that this year, the government-wide net position, we added $431,000 to the bottom line. And that, that's a good thing, as we talked about in, in the Finance Committee, the purpose of government is not necessarily to save every year. You do a very good job here, and you're very fiscally responsible as a council, obviously, and you can see your budget actual on page 100 of the CAFRA. So that, that's a good thing that you're adding, and I think the city has a very good reputation for being, being good not only on the expense side, but paying attention to how they, how they budget. We'll talk about that briefly in a minute. On the government-wide net position, you can see now you're up to $44,907,000. And that key number on page 19 that we like to point out is this, this $6,972. That's, that's kind of the, the free money, not the free money, but that's the amount of money that you have to spend, at least on the government-wide statement, which differs from the fund financial statements. One of the changes that would happen this year, you'll notice that the successor housing agency was moved from the fiduciary over, or the agency fund over to the governmental funds. And so you'll see that there's a, quite an increase, 700, or $7.5 million that was transferred into the governmental activities. It's not that you got more money, it's just that it was traded places because the governmental agency doesn't roll up into the governmental funds. Bryce, go ahead. Now, on the second set of income and balance sheet that you have, this, this one's actually more pertinent. The full accrual accounting is the government-wide, and that's the full economic power of the city. But when you get, when you get to this balance sheet and this income statement, it's, it's more the current economic resources of the city, and this is really the one that you budget to in the general fund. So when we talk about unassigned fund balance, the other one, I think, you know, the government-wide, it was a $6,900,000, I believe, and this one, it's a $5,31,000. That's a great number. That's sort of your, your checkbook number that you can, you can spend as a council. If somebody comes to you and you collect all your cash, and you're, you have all your cash and your accounts receivable come in, that's the number that you could spend. And it correlates very well to your expenses. You're just slightly over in your general fund, $4 million, and it's very unusual to have that kind of strength, that you could actually pay for not only, I mean, you could pay for an entire year, next year. So that's something the city should be very, very happy about. I mentioned page 100, there's a favorable variance there against your budget. There, there could be things that, projects that didn't happen, or maintenance that you're working on that might be the reason for that, but it's always good to have favorable variances. And then there's a couple other things that happened during the year, one being an extraordinary loss where there was some, you can see in there that the, the Department of Finance required that you, you pay them $231,000, which is, we call it an extraordinary loss because it's infrequent, doesn't happen a lot, probably won't happen again. And then, of course, if you look at page 29 there, you can see an increase in the current year of 204,000 net of the transfers. The revenues on page 29 exceed the, the, the revenues exceed the expenses by 377,000, but then when you, after the transfers, you're, you're ending up with a net change of 204,000. And that's going right into your fund balance. So, so that's easily seen if you look at the page numbers, and we'll go ahead and see the comparisons. This is just done for your, your pleasure. I think you all probably have this in front of you, but you probably have the, the financials as well. You can see that revenues are going up slightly, and you're hanging in there on expenditures for the, the general fund. Couple extraordinary events going on, usually having to do with what's been going on in the successor agency. And the next slide is, this is the other income statement, we call it a statement of activities, this is the government-wide, and it's, so it's a little bit different, a little bit different format, full accrual basis. We don't call it expenditures here, we call it expenses. Couple other small little things there. And we have a couple auditor letters that hopefully you've, you know, we, we want to communicate with the board as much, or the, with the council as much as we can. And the 114 is a required letter. It gives you some, some detail, which I won't go into unless you want to talk about it. And the SAS 115 letter is a management letter, which we try and, you know, when we're, we're auditing, note things that we think would be helpful to the city. And things have gotten pretty good around here. Your, your finance manager has really tightened the screws over the years that, the few years that he's been here, and it's, it's commendable what's, what's happened here in the city. So we're, we're very happy to actually present this almost in October, which is early. And in addition, the CAFRA, it's kind of amazing, actually, what, what, what's going on here in the city. So I'm just, I gotta put that plug in for, for staff. And with that, I'll just open it up to council for any questions.
Any questions at this end? Nope. Julie?
Not a question, just a thank you, thank you, Kevin, good job. We knew you were really good, but we really appreciate this. It's, it's always a proud moment when you can tell the press how strong your budget is, when you see so many of our, our sister cities around the region struggling. And we may be small, but we're a tight ship, and you're keeping it that way, and that's really wonderful. And we're going to be looking forward to getting that award. I know our Contra Costa Transportation Authority has gotten it several years in a row. I would be more than proud to have Clayton on that very small list, that very short list of folks to get that award. That's, it's really.
Kevin won't tell you, but the checklist is 110 pages.
I'm not surprised.
He went through every page.
That's awesome. That's awesome. So congratulations, good job, thank you.
Keith?
Yes, I just want to, back on that subject, want to confirm once again that the auditors were very complimentary of staff. Howard and I had a number of questions, spent over two hours going over the report, we, to show, first of all, we read it.
You know, I, I've got to tell you, that's a credit to the council. A lot of times, we go to these meetings and we go through in detail, and it's being read as we went. And it was very obvious that the Finance Committee had underlined and marked up both, both members of the Finance Committee, plenty of questions, hopefully a lot of answers. So, you know, I think the council, you set the tone at the top, and it's an environmental tone that auditors pay attention to, and it goes right over to the city manager, Napper, and carries itself down, and you can feel it.
Well, as I said, we had a number of questions, and of course, you answered those questions quickly, and then Kevin interpreted it for us so we could understand it.
Yes.
With Gary's assistance, kind of broke it down.
Yes.
Because you do have your own language.
Yes, we do, and Kevin is part of our culture, because he comes from a CPA firm.
Lots of acronyms.
Yes, GFOA, CAFRA.
And as Julie said, it's very reassuring to hear the report just continues to get better and better.
Yeah.
As Kevin and Gary have done a great job, and we appreciate it.
Yes. Agree with that.
Shu? Nothing? Yeah, I'd like to say a couple of things. First of all, how many cities prepare a CAFRA? I mean, that you know that you work.
You know, there's a trend towards it, and it's, 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 but a lot of smaller cities try not to do it because it is labor-intensive. The city of Arinda just, just barely did one a couple years ago, and Lafayette is, is also getting ready to do that. You know, Danville does it. So there's, there's definitely a trend there that's, that's happening, but it's not necess- by the way, the, the CAFRA is not an authoritative presentation for, you know, an auditor. It is really done, if I could say, kind of a beauty contest. But it is, it is nice to have that kind of information at your fingertips when you go through it, and, you know, we're going to give you, and you're going to have, and your, your Gasby, governmental accounting standards, you're going to have the opinion, you're going to have the management discussion analysis and the financial statements. But the transmittal letter and all the statistical information is valuable to people that may, may float you bonds and things in the future, so.
And, and having a CAFRA makes it easy to locate and look at all the categories, you know? So I expect that Kevin will be able to do this next year, half the time because he already has the chart.
He has to stay because he's set up anybody down the road with quite an act of follow.
They wanted to do October, but I had to push back a little bit. Have to be realistic. And also, Mayor, if you don't mind if I jump in real quickly, just to add, I can't take the thunder because this is years and years of policies. We, the city stands where they are today in a good position because of years of policies set by the city council, as well as our city manager, Mr. Gary Napper, and, and his leadership for, for staff. And then also, you know, I wanted to thank the auditors for all of their hard work and their professionalism this year, and even over the years, because they were there a couple of years when it was a little bit more difficult for the city, but they have really been an asset to the city to have your professionalism and your insight. So it was really a team effort on, on all, all areas of the city. So thank you to everybody else.
Thank you.
You know, a nice thing about it, it's kind of a sad thing, you know, when you do a good job as an accountant, you kind of cut yourself out of a little work because next year it gets easier and easier. And now, now we do more things at home, and we don't need you to be looking over our shoulder that much, so it's really a good thing for everybody, you know? But we've enjoyed your service over these years. We've worked close for many years.
Thank you, Mayor.
And these guys know what they do, and they, they don't leave any leaf unturned, and, and Gary's at the helm of the city, and he knows what you're doing, so watch out, you know?
Thank you, Mayor.
You better watch out, you know, Christmas is coming. So anyhow, great job by everybody, Kevin, I mean, just, just an awesome job. You know, it, it feels comfortable to know that I'm leaving the city, but I know that financially we're in great shape, so that's good. That's a good feeling, so. Any other questions, you know, up here? So if we can go to, go to public comment, do we have public comment on this now?
And I would just add that we have also presented the Clayton Finance Authority with, with this, it's a little bit of a subset of your actual financials.
Okay.
But it's under separate cover, so I just bring that up.
Right. All right, so we opened up for public comment, and we don't have any public comments, so we're going to close public comment. And if I can get a motion by the council to approve for year 2015-16, blah, blah, blah?
I approve, I make a motion, and that the council approves fiscal year 2015-2016 comprehensive annual financial report as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Thank you very much for your services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sticking in my office. No. So we sit in my office.
What's that?
Gary, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. There's a second matter to this particular item, we've included it in your agenda packet. And now that we know we have X amount of dollars in the bank, we, we did identify, and the auditors identified, that there's approximately $205,000 in the general fund, and that was more than what the operational expenses were. We were more than a balanced budget. And so, similar to last year, that amount was $389,000, and you took a, a second look at that and decided that there were some unmet needs of the city that perhaps needed some attention. And actually, the web streaming that was just indicated tonight was one of those that you funded using those monies, once we had satisfied operational expenses. Once again, this year, we have 204,000, almost 205,000 included in your agenda packet were some items that staff had indicated that might, you know, require some additional thought. I can go through those individually, but I think really what we're at at this point is, should the city council want to entertain discussion of those items, the disposition of those monies at a subsequent meeting, and then bring to the table those items that perhaps you, as members of the council, have thought of on your own, that we didn't include in our staff list, then we would like your instruction to us that we could bring this back at your next meeting as a separate agenda item, so you could discuss that further. That gives notice to members of the public that who might also have some ways to look at things that we didn't know about, and we could have a general discussion in that purpose. So we invite your feedback in that regard, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have any comments up here from anyone? I think so moved, so moved.
Second.
We've got so moved, and a second on that? Okay, anyone, everyone in favor?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, that's a great way of doing it.
Thank you.
Could have said it better myself.
I'll second.
Okay, so we can close. I'm all. Consideration of proposal of Clayton, item number C, okay, we go to 8C, consideration of a proposal by the Clayton Valley Little League to permanently install a fixed outfield baseball fence on the sports field number three at Clayton Community Park, and discussion of the needs of funds to renovate the 1992-installed turf playing field and/or, and/or all fields of the Clayton Valley Park, fields number one and four. And we're going to go to our maintenance supervisor to this, and bring us up this bar.
Good evening, Mayor Geller, members of the council. So we'll just dive right into this, I'll try not to stumble too hard. The proposal for Clayton Valley Little League has presented the city with a proposal to jointly install a permanent fence, shared costs between Clayton Valley Little League and the city, and their storage container that would be located- and the city, and their storage container that would be located on field number three at the Clayton Community Park. In addition to these alterations, Clayton Valley Little League also proposes to build a permanent pitching mound on this same baseball field. As the park is a community park open to all individuals and enjoyed by many user groups, staff seeks stakeholder input and City Council direction about the proposals, design, impact on park irrigation, maintenance, park users, other user groups, and also the project costs. We'll go with the design, our comments on the design first. Clayton Valley Little League's proposal includes a six or eight-foot galvanized black vinyl-coated fence cemented directly into the grass area. In consideration of the initial proposal, maintenance staff notes the following sports field components must be a part of any of their approval. We'd like to go with the eight-foot high fence as opposed to the six-foot high fence. Installation of a 10-foot wide double maintenance gate to be put on the fence so that we can get vehicles in there and on the field. A minimum 12-inch wide housekeeping strip located directly under the fence line. Now, this is typical of all the fences at the Clayton Community Park. They all have a foot concrete. We call it a housekeeping strip underneath the fence lines. And a 10-foot wide permanent warning track for the player's safety so that we don't have people running into there because we would imagine there might be adults on this field too, just trying to hit home runs, so. Clayton Valley Little League's proposal also seeks free storage of a permanent metal cargo container as a CVLL equipment storage facility. If accepted, staff would like this storage facility to match all other existing buildings and/or structures located within the park. Much time and effort has been placed on making sure all the building and/or structures have met certain design criteria. These designs range from bathrooms, garbage container area, next-toil buildings, to even the barbecue shade structures and garbage cans that we have up there. Staff would like to continue this type of design criteria for this and all other future design proposals. On a note, based on the initial design that was presented to us by Clayton Valley Little League, no access is provided to remove the storage container without the removal of the third baseline fence. So, a little different than what we would consider to be a temporary one that was put on number, field number one. We've always considered that a temporary. This, to us, would be a permanent one. Field irrigation. Installation of this fence and storage container will impact the irrigation system located in and around field number three. Alterations to the irrigation system must include, and, you know, we don't know this is just by visual of what it would include, may include more, may be less, relocation of the majority of the sprinklers located within the new playing area, complete redesign of the majority of the irrigation systems and/or sprinklers located outside the playing area, possible landscape redesign of the area located outside the newly fenced playing area, including maybe hardscapes, structures. The remaining area will be insufficient for organized soccer play or anything like that. So, it's something that we need, would need to look at. Possible relocation of the scoreboard depending on the design behind the fence line. Field maintenance, there's always maintenance costs associated with any new infrastructure or landscape. The following is a list of the obvious ones that we recognize. Edging along the new fence line area, upkeep of the new warning track area, and that would include the lip that will obviously be built up on that. We already have a lip on the infield area. We're going to get one by the warning track. Future repair and replacement of the permanent fence. We just replaced all the fences up there at the park just recently, a couple of years ago. And then there's unknown maintenance of the possible future landscape of the landscaping outside the area that would be fenced. Park users and user groups. Installation of this fence will take more than half the open area now available for all park users. Many people use the open space areas on the open fields for a variety of activities. This fence will obviously close in the field number three park area and limit the amount of open space area outside the fence line. The obvious major impact this fence would have on other user groups is eliminating any use, use of any other organized sports with the exception of baseball on field number three. The addition of the pitching mound will eliminate any use for youth softball. And the addition of the fence will limit any use for any adult softball. Soccer will obviously not be able to play on the field at all. As these are the only sports fields located within town, it narrows even further the places people can go to enjoy open space park areas. On a smaller note, the new scoreboards at the park were specifically designed to accommodate a variety of sports. Project cost, it is unfeasible at this stage to give an estimated cost of this proposal without at least conceptual designs to consider. The price range could vary significantly depending on the detail and the scope of the work. The following is a breakdown of staff's estimated, and these are very broad, range of probable costs associated with converting field number three as proposed by CVLL. The fence with gate and housing strip, 20,000 to 30,000. I know, the construction cost in this, the fence with the housekeeping strip too, and I think it's often overlooked, it would have to be surveyed so that we don't have a fence that rolls like this. I mean, there's going to have, it's going to have to be surveyed out and that's a cost that we don't know. Irrigation system modifications, 50,000 to 100,000. It would probably be easier, well, it will be easier to redo all the irrigation in field three and the surrounding area. It would be impossible by looking at the plans to tap in like we did when they built the gym. We got real lucky there. All the lines ran one way. We cut them off, added a couple of heads, we were fine. This is not the case in this particular project. Ball field play surface, 15 to 20 grand. And what we mean by this is, once we get done with this project, the playing field surface would have to be redone too. We wouldn't want to have, you know, an old playing field, have this brand-new field and then the infield area, you know, look like it's been there for 100 years, especially with all the tractors and equipment that we rolled over. Relandscape, 15 to 100,000. Why the range? Well, we don't know what that re-landscape's going to, what it'll be. Complementing storage building, again, this is another one, 5,000 to 80,000. What's it going to look like? What are we approving to be put there? How big will that be? And access and other things, we don't know. Design and blueprints, the extent obviously of the project will determine the design cost and blueprints. The following is a list of some of the items that could directly impact the degree of difficulty and the cost of integrating Clayton Valley Little League's proposal into a complete public park vision. The degree of the irrigation design, most definitely. Landscape solutions for the area outside the fence line, hardscapes, paths, barbecues, covers, what have you. Storage building design. And then obviously the degree of the design and blueprints. Public policy discussion. While initially viewed as a rather simple request by Clayton Valley Little League, its proposal significantly modifies the original design of field number three as adapted for other play purposes, both by organized sports and public free play. The determination of the community park's public purpose and the respect requires public and stakeholder input, along with City Council discussion. For maximum outreach, staff also invited Monteabllo Soccer Association, All Out Sports League, to this meeting to offer comments regarding the permanent modification to field number three. Alternately, modifying field number three as suggested by CVLL does open up for discussion what other park public features could be added to the balance, to the balance of this area, play area. For example, should it be left renovated as open playfield turf or flying kites or other free play activities? Should it be converted to park hardscape with picnic shelters and other associated play structures? Or should plans be considered for maybe a possibly a BMX professionally-designed bike park or a properly-designed skateboard park? Converting turf used to recreational hardscape would certainly reduce irrigation and repair expenses. In essence, does the Clayton Valley Little League proposal open up other beneficial uses, use alternatives for the remainder of field number three and what and who, and to what and whose expense? And then that is it for that part of the...
Yeah. That's fine.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, since the item was being brought here, staff, the second section that we talked about was just kind of a bigger, broader view on the condition of Clayton Community Park since it's been installed in 1992. We recognize that the chasing water leaks has caused a lot of disruption to the playing surface of those fields, as well as some natural wildlife. It's not too hard to imagine, as many of the kids are playing soccer, that kids could disappear down some of the holes as they are running along the field. And that's a safety hazard. And in fact, it's actually reached a degree that the soccer association has virtually pulled off the fields from playing. Their revenue, you know, that they, we, the city has received over the past years has significantly declined because they have virtually found that the fields in their present condition, coupled by the drought, have become unsafe and they've found alternative locations. So, we included in the agenda packet just a real big, broad discussion of where do we want to go? Where do we wish to take community park? And that information is there for you to discuss, going from just renovating the fields and the turf to, and we've talked about it before, artificial turf, which is a significant dollar investment. So, that concludes staff's, you know, input into the discussion. And at this point in time, it's kind of a roundtable discussion, perhaps inviting representatives from Clayton Valley Little League up for their proposal and reaction. I think, I know All Out Sports League is here and I believe the soccer association is as well.
Yeah. First I'm going to ask, do we have any questions up here for, Mark?
I have a couple. Mark? The eight-foot fence. Why, why would, six versus eight?
I think the cost is minimal and the higher...
Why, why would you do an eight as opposed to a six?
Just the larger fence for, just for kids running up, trying to jump and get a ball by the fence, the higher, I mean, they're not going to jump up eight feet, so.
So, it's, it's an aesthetic thing only, I mean, again, it's a negligible cost, but I don't, like, the high school put in a six-foot fence for the softball, you know, when they redid the fence. Little League had a, I think, a three-and-a-half or a four-foot fence, right, Kev? It was about a four-foot fence. And then when the high school took over the fields, they put a six-foot. And I was just curious whether there was some safety reason for the eight-foot because the six-foot actually would give better sightlines for the remainder of the park than an eight-foot. Eight-foot's going to significantly truncate, I think, and block out that. But if there's a safety issue, then that's one thing.
I just think that the taller the fence, the safer it is, yeah.
All right. And when you talked about re-landscaping, that's if the council decided on the unused area outside of the fence to do something other than grass, because otherwise you wouldn't have to do anything to change what's there, correct?
We'd have to redo the irrigation, that's all.
Other than irrigation?
Yeah.
But when you talk about a, you know, re-landscape of 15,000 to 100,000, that's if we wanted to then drastically redesign the other area instead of just leaving it grass for people to still throw...
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Your dogs. Okay.
Yep.
Have you gotten any updates since we talked? It was mentioned when we last talked about artificial turf. But I do remember Laura had mentioned, the last time we did this, that she had talked to, I think, Foster City about some of the artificial turf they put in and they found that it actually cost more in maintenance than the grass. Have, in the last five years or whenever that came, have you guys gotten any, you know, information about, you know, the fields? Because I know there's a lot of, you know, places that are doing it, but maintenance-wise...
I know, I know that just from my own experience of talking with other people that I know at other cities that do maintenance, that when we first approached this, and I think that we had talked about when we, when this study was presented to us and they were saying 15 years, and we knew that it was eight, and that's what I had heard way back then, that it is more typically eight. And then the minimal maintenance, as this study shows, there's a lot more maintenance involved in it and it's evolved itself into its own maintenance procedures that they have for turf, including grooming and watering it down. There's a lot of things that have changed on artificial turf too, as far as maintenance, where it used to be, you put it out, you don't do nothing, so.
And if I recall correctly, when we last discussed this, you guys are not in favor of the artificial turf because, primarily because the ground movement's going to create issues with that and create imperfections in and of itself, right?
I think it'll buckle.
Yeah.
I think it'll buckle.
All right.
Keith?
Another question. Adult team usage up there, is that occurring very often anymore?
No.
Okay.
Well, no, Casey...
(inaudible).
Casey, Casey, come on up to, so, I can get you on microphone, please.
Well, not as much as it used to. We used to have all three fields all five days a week.
So, certainly is not as, it's not used to the extent it used to be, but sounds like it still is...
And we use the field two, actually, for softball, adult softball, in the springtime. We run two leagues in the summer and also in the fall.
So, you don't use the third field?
No, we currently use field two.
Just two, okay.
So, occasionally if we have a tournament, we may use the additional field, but it's primarily field two.
Okay. Casey, would you just introduce yourself?
Yeah, sorry. I'm Casey Copeland, President of All Out Sports League. And we've been, thankfully to Gary, we've been in town, in the city of Clayton now for seven years.
Yeah, great.
And so, we, we love it. Things are going well. And we've always tried our best to deliver for the city of Clayton what the parents and the kids want. And just to touch on the field uses, we have gotten a lot of complaints from the adults that the potholes are really having an issue. Some players are, don't even want to play in the league now because of those issues and so, and I have brought it to Gary's attention about the situation there.
Keith, any questions over here? Okay, I have a question for you. So, Casey, if we do this proposal, okay, how will this affect All Out Sports and what you do for the city? Will it lessen the ability to do it? Will it increase the ability? Will it give you another field or...
Well, we don't do, we don't have a youth baseball program.
Okay.
We have one travel baseball team, but that's it. But we don't have, we don't have Little League baseball. So, it really doesn't affect us, you know, per se. If we were getting kicked off the field two, then yeah, it would affect us. But the adults here, they enjoy their softball, you know, it's an outlet for them.
Yeah.
So, I certainly wouldn't want to see that go away.
Thank you. And you're going to stay around because we may have some more questions.
Sure.
Okay. Sorry, you have a question?
Yeah, as long as you're up here. So, don't you also do some soccer, younger soccer? What are some of the other programs that I, I know I saw and what, do you ever use field three?
We, no, we use, we do T-ball, but that's on, we do field four for that.
Okay.
Small field.
Okay. And what is, what is your position regarding Little League's proposal? I mean, what is your thoughts in terms of, would that be a good or a bad thing?
I think, I think it would be good. I mean, if it's, if it's going to benefit the kids in this area, absolutely. You know, I don't see it affecting us unless Gary came back to me and raised up my cause, but, but I don't see it affecting us negatively at all.
Is that because you don't use that field?
Because we don't use it, yeah.
I'm way ahead of you. Okay, great. All right, you're going to stick around for a little while? I think we're going to have some more questions. So, can I, with that being said, who's representing the soccer, soccer group? Do we have a soccer person here?
Okay, so...
You didn't invite, they didn't want to come?
Well, no, actually, that's not true. They, I talked with Jeremy Amos, who Gary has talked with. He's been the President of MDSA for, or actually, they call it Commissioner, for, I think, three or four years. And I've had several discussions with him about this. He called me on his way home from work today and said he could not make it, but basically wanted to indicate that, kind of what Gary said. And he said, he said he's worked with Gary on this, but soccer has had a real issue with the safety concerns with all the fields. They stopped using field three several years ago when the pigs came down and destroyed it and they had to, I mean, I think the city shut it down for rehab. Soccer found another field and then they just never went back. And I'm just the messenger here. Jeremy also indicated that, you know, with the combination of the safety factor, the field conditions, and the price, it is real problematic for soccer. And I know this is an issue that Little League has too with the price and that's part of the problem with, you know, we're a small city, we don't have the budget that Concord does and so, we charge more. But Jeremy indicated that they were using field two to start this year for soccer and actually Bennett, my son Bennett was playing up there and it was very convenient. But about halfway through, they switched over to boat ride and they got about half the rate that they were, were here and the field was in better, better condition. They did not use field one this year, or they may have started, but they haven't used it for any games. And he actually said that part of that was because that's the big field for the bigger kids and they're running faster and there's so much... kids, and they're running faster, and there's so much uneven surface between dead areas and regular grass. They actually had several refs go down, which are old men like myself, and then they also had some kids at the faster speeds, and that change in terrain was creating issues, notwithstanding the ever-present ground squirrels that we seem to, you know, have. You know, they've, they've been using Pine Hollow, and Pine Hollow just doesn't seem to have a ground squirrel problem like we have, because it's kind of.
It's surrounded by houses.
Surrounded by all the houses, so they're not right up to the thing. Boat Ride, my Bennett's been over there, and they don't seem to have quite as much of an issue with the ground squirrels, even though they're on the open space, and I'm not sure why, but they don't, I'm one of the parents that walks around and looks for the. That may be, maybe we need to bring in some. But in any event, Jeremy said that, you know, there, there were little concern about, you know, the proposal in terms of it would take out a potential spot, but frankly, they haven't been there for three years, and he said, we have no short-term plans to try and go back to field three simply because of the cost. They found alternative venues that are cheaper. But he did express a little reservation about, you know, just cutting it off for one single, you know, use on that. I think that's generally what Jeremy asked me to convey.
That's fair representation.
And.
So one of my questions from that is, you know, it sounds like our fields need some work, no matter what, you know, they need some work. It sounds like, you know, what Clayton Valley Little League is proposing is, you know, a major change, you know, to, to the areas also.
Kevin Durner, the president of Little League.
I know, and I'm gonna have him coming up in a minute, okay? I've got that, and I was just curious, you know, in the back of our head somewhere, you know, when you start doing cost accounting, maybe you couldn't do it in account, you know, what would it cost just to bring the field back so soccer can come back? And would we get more income that way, you know, more bank for the bucks than doing this major, you know, thing, and making it a one-use field, just in the back of the head? So with that, let's get the Little League guys up. Clayton Valley Little Leagues. You don't look little, though, mate.
He also does football, so.
Hello. I'm here, my name's Kevin Durn. I'm the Clayton Valley Little League president. I've been that for the last three years now. Been on the board for eight. I have kids that have been in this community for fifteen years, and I'm almost termed out. But that being said, I'm here to advocate for this, for our league, to make CCP3 what it once was. Last few years, we've struggled with our fields, if you didn't already know. Limited time and space down at the high school fields has created a position where we now have to find a home, and rightfully so, Clayton Valley should be our home, and those fields up there are in despair. I, if I could bring the people in this room that send me emails and the complaints that I get from those fields, it would horrify you. Lot of safety accidents happen throughout the year. Something needs to be done. We're here to partner with you guys and ask, you know, to share the cost. We are a nonprofit, we don't have a lot of budget, but we are willing to chip in to make some minor modifications. Really, what I feel like I'm asking for, or league is asking for, is not so much. We're talking about a fence and a container, and I understand that it could be of concern, after hearing, you know, all the causes that are associated with irrigation and maintenance and whatnot, I get that. And I'm hoping that there's something alternative that we could do, maybe not today, but in the future, because, you know, Clayton, Clayton Valley, Clayton community in itself, this is a highly-desired area to wanna live, and with all the, you know, we have one of the largest Little League organizations in the area. And when I sit in my district forum meetings with all the other cities, and to hear that Clayton Valley can't host tournament games, it's frustrating, because we don't have the fields to be able to bear, you know, inviting other districts out to Clayton. Makes it very difficult, and the high school is not able to cooperate with us, so we have to turn away, you know, those tournaments, and playoffs, and All-Stars, and have to go to other cities. And I can tell you, it's pretty frustrating going down in the city of Richmond and seeing fields that are ten times our fields, and this is Clayton. So if anything, you know, bringing awareness to the city council of what needs to be done up there is probably our biggest goal here, and hopefully, at the same time, we could see some, some improvements made within the next year or two, to hold on to a lot of the kids that are in our league. We have over seven hundred kids in our league. They can't go play anywhere else unless they go to travel ball, and to be honest with you, we've lost a number of the older kids to travel ball because of the conditions of our fields and what they don't provide, which is our home run fences and, you know, grass in fields and pitching mounds. Believe it or not, that makes a big difference, and we don't want to lose our kids, we wanna keep them strong here in Clayton. So I'm here to advocate a small request, and hopefully, this will turn into something more for the future.
Can I have?
No.
Can I spoon-feed him a couple of questions?
Sure, sure.
Kevin, you did ask one of the people or got a bid for installation of a fence, correct?
Correct, and I included that in my proposal.
What was that for the rest of the public? What was the fence bid that you got?
There was two prices, one was for the six-foot fence and one was for the eight-foot fence, and I wanna say the six-foot fence and what we desired was about eight thousand dollars.
For the six-foot was eight thousand?
Yeah.
And that, that did not include a footing?
No.
Or any leveling in the lard, or, you know, all that stuff, you know? I mean, you know, and if the terrain goes like this, you know, the fence has to go like that, and then just wait.
Understandable.
And also, it sounds like you were comfortable with just a six-foot fence?
I'd be fine with a six-foot fence, and on the top, we'd have to put a plastic safety guard so that, you know, if a kid did go up and over, there's a protective bar on the top. It's a requirement.
Be safety.
And is that, is one of the things that you were willing to pay for the fence?
That's, that's pennies. I would easily throw that in.
Okay, right. I mean, not, I mean, not the guard, I mean, the whole fence. Not the guard, you know, the whole fence, yeah, smarty, okay. The, another question?
Yeah. Go ahead, Jim. Well, okay, pitching mound, that's, I don't think that's a deal breaker from Little League's standpoint in the sense that if we had to continue to use the portable mounds so that we could have more use of softball, that's not something that Little League's gonna go, oh, we can't do it then, correct?
Yes.
I know, listen, I mean, the problem is, and just so everybody knows, I'm also on the board of Little League, so I, eventually, I'll have to ask Mala whether I can even vote or anything on this, but.
We can use his expertise, right?
The, having a daughter in softball and a son in baseball, the mound, as Kevin said, is pretty important. When you go to fields that actually have true baseball mounds, those are much better than the temporary ones that we have, but we do use a temporary one down on field one now for our fifty-seventy league, and it's not optimum, but it does work. And if, you know, from my standpoint, looking at it, if, if that was gonna be a deal breaker, then we could continue to use the temporary mound so that there could be at least softball and adult softball potentially using that when, when Little League wasn't, so.
Or we can just build the mound and take it down and build it up, no?
Fine with me, too.
We bought him a nice truck with a big, you know, scoop on it, come on. Just go there, scrape that out, give you something to use the truck for now. Any other questions up here?
Follow-up question, then. Putting in this fence, do you anticipate, then, that this would generate more use of that park by the Little League?
Absolutely.
So you heard the condition of the field as well, so that, even with the fence, I mean, that's gonna end up being a safety issue with a lot of usage on that field. Are you willing to help out with some of that maintenance, or?
Yeah, I mean, we pretty much already do that throughout the year. I mean, the city's been great about going up there and doing, you know, minimal maintenance throughout the season, but, you know, we do, too. You know, we have a volunteer organization, and, you know, they, they chip in money every year, and we go up there and try to do those kinds of things. So that's, that's not an issue for us. I mean, throwing in some, you know, topsoil and the holes that are up there that occur throughout the season, we're already doing that.
You ever tried a temporary fence?
We do have a temporary fence, and that's why I'm here tonight, because.
Well, I mean, more secure temporary, you're not satisfied with the temporary, obviously?
Well, the temporary fence is something that we gotta take down and put into the storage area that we have now, and the parents are tired of putting up the storage, or putting up the temporary fence each and every game. It's.
Big job.
Kind of a pain in the neck.
Is that a safety issue at all?
No, no safety issue, it's just the, the time and expense that it takes to.
Excuse me, not for the parents putting it up, the actual safety fence itself in being utilized by the Little League and the kids out there playing?
No.
Okay.
No, not at all.
Just a couple of fundamental questions, because it's been a while since my fellows have been in, in Little League. You said you have seven hundred, and how many fields are you using now, and where are they?
So we partner with City of Concord, so we're using Pine Hollow Middle School, we're using Highlands Middle School, we're using the lower park at Highlands, we're using Boat Ride, and we're using the high school, along with your guys' fields.
And Mount Diablo Elementary?
Mount Diablo, I'm sorry, yeah, Mount Diablo.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
Okay. Any other questions here?
No.
Not a question.
So, you know, definitely, we have a need to fix things around, you know, and I'm sure you know, cities work slowly, you know? We meet every other week, you know, and sometimes, you know, whatever, and so, I mean, this is a great thing to bring to us. You know, my question's that I would like to see come back, you know, for me, my kind, my part of this is, you know, I would like to see, you know, you know, kind of written proposal of who's gonna pay for what, okay? You know, from John, the impact on irrigation and what it's gonna cost us to fix the irrigation or redo the whole irrigation, what it's gonna cost to maintain the park, you know, or the renewed park with the fences, is it gonna cost more? Who's gonna share in that expense on it, you know? And I'm just reading what you kind of put it out here, it's pretty good. I'm concerned about user groups, so I think Dave's idea about the movable pitching mound for now really works to get moving in the right direction, and then, you know, if the field's only used by you guys at one point, you know, that, that's something to come back to. Yeah, I'm real, real concerned about, you know, the total project cost and who's gonna do what, more so maintenance, because, you know, when we build the park, we always wanna, or we do something in town, because we're limited budget, we wanna make sure we have, you know, ongoing funds to do, to maintain it. It's just like, you know, what we have, the landscape tax in the Grove Park, you know, we didn't wanna build it till we knew we had the money to maintain it, and that, that's important. So, so one question I would like you to come back with is, you know, where is the money coming ongoing for it to do your part, okay, and to continue, you know, ongoing on that? Let's see, it was a couple more notes, you know, if we can get John, you know, you know, some, some designs, other than that, you know, photograph on that, that would be helpful. And then, you know, my concern, again, I'm sure Gary's looking, is we got all this staff time that it's gonna take, you know, who's covering that, the staff time to pay for that, you know? You know, where our, our maintenance department is really bogged down, okay, you know, sometimes this time of the year's a little bit lighter, but, you know, it's not really, because we're fixing things and getting ready for that, so, so it's just added staff time that, you know, you know, and added costs. So, I mean, you, you take the whole package in, I mean, we got a great starting point, I think that we need to put it back out to staff and to you to communicate with them and, and come back to council, a little bit more details, you know, so that we have something to chew on. Anything, yes?
Something else to add to the list, we got the estimates of anywhere from a hundred and fifteen to three hundred and eighty thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
So a question might also be, is there a way to phase this in? Rather than look at the entire proposal, is there a way to do it in phases?
And Keith, you know, I'm, I'm trying to change this, but battlefield surface, you know, when you got re-landscape fifteen, a hundred thousand dollars, that's a big spread. I mean, I, I, we need to lock that in a lot tighter, you know, than that, you know, I would think, and I'm just gonna throw aside, you know, I don't think the Clayton Valley Little League has ever gone to the Clayton Business Community Association for help, okay? And they're sitting there, and, you know, you know, through the high school, that, you know, you know, we're there, they're, they're there, I say we, because I'm part of it, and we're all part of it, on the whole council, but, you know, they're there to help, and they have a great fundraising ability, and what they look for is how can they help a lot of people, a lot of kids at the same time? They don't like to give a donation of a thousand dollars to send a kid, you know, one kid out to a camp or to learn something, but, I mean, you're talking about seven hundred kids, and not one year, you're talking about for years to come. That would be a great spot to go for some financial help, I think, personally.
Right, I would agree with that.
Wouldn't you agree with that, you know? Julie, do you have something else you would like to add?
Well, yeah, you had asked for questions earlier, and I didn't have any questions, but I do have some comments.
Please.
There's actually, a gentleman raises his hand here that.
And I'm more than happy to hear them first before I say what I have to say.
Okay, would you like to comment there?
Aaron Paez, I've been a resident, family resident of this city since day one, let's just say. Thank you for your services, Mr. Diaz. Thank you for coming to Local Twelve-Thirties fundraisers in our open house, I'm firefighter also. I've worked here in Clayton, I've come full circle.
Yes.
I wanted to talk briefly, because we talked about the CBCA, and we have a board, we have a government also with the CVL, and we have, I'm kind of new to it, I'm learning, but for the most part, there is an absolute business side to this, just like everything, unfortunately. And I think it's very important that we understand that there are seven hundred kids enrolled, let's take that and possibly double that, so we have fourteen hundred adults coming into the city between April and June. During that week, not Sunday included, there's multiple games going on. Saturday, there could be a possibly like eighteen to twenty-five games being played within the city, or technically, in the city area, because of Boat Ride and the school fields in the Concord area. With that said, I can tell you, at least once a week, I am finding myself at Ed's or at Skipholin's, because this is what we do. We go play baseball, we reward the kids with pizza or hamburgers or whatever it is. So there's an absolute need for the CBCA to be involved with this. Thank you for bringing that up, and we would love to work with you. Again, I'm new to the board, so I think there's a partnership there, definitely, and we would love to work with you. I didn't want, I just wanted to jump on that right away, because I think that's a really important topic that we talk about. Ms. Pierce, you did a great job with getting the gym funded, so I see there's something there. The last thing I'm just gonna say is that this community really does pride itself on the Grove and what that's done. It's brought in so much business, including Oktoberfest and the concerts in the park. I feel like the CVL, which says in its title, Clayton Valley Little League.
I agree.
There is something to be said that we need to be more proactive with Oktoberfest, with the Labor Day thing that goes on downtown, I can't remember the name, but, you know, we definitely wanna get more involved, and we're just looking for that hand-in-hand relationship with the city, with the business district, to come and tell us, hey, here's what we want. And with that said, I wanna see, being part of the city for so long, I want to see this city be kind of a, exactly what it's starting to go towards, a sports, entertainment, but not Concord Pavilion style, you know, hometown attentiveness style city. And I think that Clayton Valley Little League can definitely be part of that, that, you know, Fourth of July, that when we have these parades, that we're down there with our teams, you know, marching in the parade, you know, it's, I mean, I hate to say it, because we don't live in that society anymore, but this is kind of a Mayberry city, and that's what I want. That's why, you know, we live here, because we have that feeling. So, and as far as I can remember back, I've played Little League, or I've been a part of the Little League, the things I think of when I think of America, apple pie and baseball.
Well, I'm gonna give you, before you leave on that, so, so one of the things, you know, the Clayton Business Community Association, one of their needs is always volunteers, okay? So they're always looking for adult volunteers to help their events, and also, you know, kid volunteers, and we need them a certain age so they could, you know, help with parking and different things, and you got older kids there playing also.
The hand is coming.
Right, so, so, so what I'm saying is, it's a joint thing. They've been around for twenty-something years now, and we're looking for new members that are your age, okay, and I'm pointing out the you being plural over there. I'm pointing out the you being plural over there, because us old timers are getting a little tired and you have the ability to join a club and get involved with the club and direct the club.
Absolutely.
So this is, the ball's in your court and I'm going to smack it over to you. So I want to see you move from that. And I'm going to go to Gary now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The dialogues is
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Well, you know what? Julie has a comment.
Well.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Because I wanted to provide some parameters and then for the council member as well. But the dialogue is encouraging. I just wanted people, and I know the council understands this, but for members of the community, Clayton Community Park is not in its present condition because of a lack of desire by the city in its organization. It's really, it takes money and it takes resources. Let me, let me frame that for everybody here. This current year budget, the maintenance of the entire park year round, including water, is 187,000 a year. The amount of revenue produced off of that, and I've heard comments that our rates are higher than others, is 44,000. That's a recovery of around 23% of the cost. Recreation typically is a subsidized, you know, operation, whether it's here or elsewhere. But there's not a lot of revenue coming off to go back into that park, so the general fund subsidizes it. The Grove Park was mentioned. The reason the Grove Park partly is so successful in being maintained is it has its own revenue source. It's funded by taxpayers. Several other surrounding communities like Pleasant Hill has a Recreation and Parks District, which is a community facility district that has a separate tax. And Councilmember Shuey and I know, you know, we've had these discussions. We would, you know, like nothing more, I played Little League, I was All-Star and, you know, everything else. I'd love to see Clayton Community Park be what it's potentially could be as well. So it is, you know, once again, it's not a matter, it's just a matter of those resources, you know, because we can see a lot of vision that's occurring up there. We've talked in the past about lights, you know, that are shielded and that would augment the opportunity for the kids to play during the day. They can go home for, you know, homework except on the weekends. And then the adults, if you have adults who play recreation, the adults will pay the fees to pay under, to play under the lights and that subsidizes your youth sports. Now, of that 44,000 that we get off of rentals for Clayton Community Park, about 55% of that is Clayton Valley Little League. They pay around 24,000 a year. The soccer association, as we have, you know, discovered now because of the playing conditions of the field, they are retreating from using that. And so our rental revenues are going down. The other paying amount is for the picnic facilities and whatnot that's been up there. So the vision for Clayton Community Park, you know, has always been there. It could really be something like a gym. It's just a matter of how do we partner amongst everybody in order to make it happen? With, thank you for allowing me to provide that framework.
Councilwoman Julie Pierce.
Oh, wait, I gotta
No, you can't. I'd get my head ripped off. Back up a little bit.
I want to thank Clayton Valley Little League for bringing this up because it's been a frustration for many of us, even those of us who are parents and grandparents and just want to take kids up to run around in the park, that it's partly due to the drought, but due to the location and the number of critters that love to dig tunnels up there, it's not a safe place to walk across, much less run across some of the time. And I appreciate your, your efforts in filling those holes with soil, but as soon as you do that, another one pops up right next to it. I have them in my backyard, so I understand totally. I think this is a good opener for the discussion and I'd really like to see us do something and do it right. I think we need to have a deeper discussion. I need, I think we need to narrow down the costs on all of these things. And I really would like to throw that part of it back to, to staff to think about what some of the options are. You know, if you go Cadillac, if you go gold plated, if you just kind of get by and do the minimal needed to make it safe and playable. The discussion also needs to include, is it right to fence off part of that park and preclude using soccer up there ever? It very well may be. There are other soccer facilities. That, that may well be a good thing. If that's the case, what do you do with the rest of the parcel there? There's not enough room to play soccer. If you fence it off, the rest of that field doesn't have room to do soccer on it. It's probably fine for running around with a kite or something like that, but could we do something else? Could we satisfy the needs of another element of our community who have been talking to us for years and years and years? And Gary mentioned it in his intro, the possibility of a skateboard park or a bike park. I guess, John, you were the one that brought that up in your report. It could be an opportunity to add some of those other amenities in the location for an element of our community that really doesn't have anything organized. There certainly are a lot of skate parks around in other communities and all of the fears that came with them to begin with haven't seemed to materialize. They've actually worked out pretty darn well. And they're a resource for the kids that aren't the Little League kids or aren't the soccer kids. And, and so that might be something that would be an amenity. Now, those aren't cheap. Trust me, I figured that out a long time ago. But if we're going to do this, maybe we need to think about it as a comprehensive thing. We also need to realize that the city doesn't have huge resources. So there's another item on our agenda tonight that needs resources as well. There are other things that everybody has thought of. So one of the things I'd like to ask is for staff to kind of look at what some of those options might be. We heard in our last agenda item that, you know, there may be a little pocket of something that we could do something with, but it may also be need, needed for maintenance of city facilities that we've already got. During the recession, we went to zero on our building maintenance, absolute couldn't do it. We kept everybody employed. And that was our top priority and to keep the services going to the cities. But we've been gradually doing some of that delayed maintenance on some of our, our facilities and structures. So we need to look at what are all the things possible. And if we decide that the idea of adding to the amenities at the community park, and having been on the planning commission when we planned that park, believe me, we pulled that park out of thin air practically. The developers at Oakhurst didn't intend to give us anything like what we have. They intended to have three graded pads and, you know, a place where you could throw down a base and call it good. They didn't intend to have anything like what we wound up getting out of them. But we were determined and a couple of the people on the planning commission at that time had kids in high school baseball and they really wanted a showcase for the city. And we had it at the beginning. But lots of things have come in the way and, and the cost of maintenance and ground squirrels and droughts and things like that have, have been a real challenge. But you're presenting us with an opportunity to think again about maybe making it back into a showcase. It will have to be a partnership. We will have to fundraise. There's no question in my mind. The city can't come up, I don't think, as a top priority to, to spend what could well be close to a million dollars probably on making that into the showcase that we want it to be. And if we do one field, do we really want to stop with one field or do we want to make the other fields playable as well? I mean, we need to think about that. We need to know what the scope of that would be because if you're going to do a fundraiser, you need to know what your target is. And I know when we planned the gym, it took us six years to raise the money and to find the grant to pay the rest of it, but it was well worth every minute of it. That doesn't mean it can't be phased. That doesn't mean we can't start with a piece of it and build on that. But I, I want a whole lot more information and I want us to have a broad discussion of all of the extra infrastructure or whatever else it is, that what the priorities are for recreation and those sorts of things in the city. I think it's time we did that again. We haven't done it in quite a while. And getting a better handle on the, the dollars would be very, very helpful. And, and I think it needs to be different tiers of improvement to look at that. So I, I'd be fully in favor of taking a look and seeing what we can do. I, I think that's fair to the community and you're right. We, we could maybe make that back into the asset that it was originally intended to be. We've done it with the Grove. Who knows? Maybe we can find a way to, to do something like that with the community park. Worth a shot. Host the rib cook off up there.
Yeah.
It's what we built the shelter for.
Right. So we're going to go to Councilman Dave Shuey for a comment now?
Yes, comment.
I want a good comment.
Well, just a couple, a couple of things. One of the things that Kevin mentioned was we have, we continually cannot host Tournament of Champions and All-Stars because we don't have the facilities and the use. And, and as Ben brought out, if you play four games on that field on a Saturday, you get approximately 100 people with the kids, their parents, friends, 100 people each game. So you're bringing in 400 people. Half of that is from out of the
Oh, yeah.
Town and they will then go after that game to, to, you know, downtown. So that, that is something that would be a win-win, not only from Little League standpoint that, you know, we get so much grief from our parents that we have to go to our Tournament of Champions in Richmond when it's like, why can't we just play, you know, where we always play? But so that's something that, that certainly has to be considered when, when the city looks at it. In terms of, you know, the, the grand scheme of things, I think, Kevin, you can come up and speak if you want, but Little League's proposal is really not, we're going to make this the Taj Mahal. They, it's, it's, the temporary fence is a pain in the butt and we, we thought we could get a permanent fence in there. And we're talking tens of thousands of dollars total, not a million dollars, you know, in a partnership and everything else. We have, at the Little League level, talked about where our new home is going to be future-wise and whether it's going to be at CCP. That's a much bigger question because you probably have to add a field on Field Four, an actual field. If, if Little League were going to, to say, we're going to fundraise and we're going to partner with the, the city to make that our home, this proposal is for one field, which services our, our majors teams, which is the showcase team, you know, the Williamsport. But, and a couple of, real quick, a couple of things. John and Gary have been great over the years, understanding the limitations they have. They each had kids in Little League and John is always willing to step up and help us. We did a great partnership with the city on Field One, when, when the whole three year, four years ago, when we definitely got kicked out and we had no place, we worked and, and kind of traded some of our fees for work we did as an organization and we were able to do that. And that's, I think, what we were envisioning, what Little League was envisioning, bless you, was, was just, hey, let's get a fence in here. We have a $10,000, you know, bid that we can come in and, and, you know, have them do, much like we did at Field One. Obviously, John, you have, you know, legitimate concerns about the, the irrigation. I think the re-landscaping and everything else, you know, whatever, you, the, the city tries to put in new, new ground, you know, sod, not sod, but infield fines when they can. We usually partner with them and pay for some of that. And, you know, so all of that stuff, Little League was looking at tens of thousands, not hundreds of thousands. Little League has, has never had to go to CBCA because that, just like the city council, we've had really good leadership and so we actually have a surplus in our rainy day fund, which is why Kevin, as, as his kids are aging out, he was hoping to get something before they aged out and spend, you know, 10, 20,000 to, to put something in there. So I, you know, it would be a much bigger deal to think about, you know, overall. I think we're always going to have some problems up there with the irrigation. I mean, I saw that, that one troublesome spot right outside of Field Two, first baseline, it seems like that's dug up every six months. And if we can't find a way to vault that and fix it, it, it's never going to be something that, that can be done. So I, I guess from Little League standpoint, gosh, can we just do something that's kind of permanent, but Gary?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate, you know, the fact that Clayton Valley Little League came forward to do this. But at, at a minimum, I think, you know, John has raised that the fence alone is not sufficient. I think even Clayton Valley Little League and Councilmember Shuey must admit there, the warning track is, is necessary.
After the warning track.
Probably something underneath the fence, that permanent
Oh, yeah.
Placement. And so, you know, I think that's what we wanted to daylight. And John, Mr. Johnson has actually received a, a proposal from, is it Pacheco?
Pacheco Brothers Landscape.
Pacheco Brothers Landscape, that to, to renovate the fields, you know, just do what's necessary. But this is all four fields because we haven't talked much about Field Number Four, which is next to the community gym that Casey uses a lot. And, and that's horrible. I mean, that's
It's awful.
Over there. But the whole dialogue tonight was, is, was just to, you know, try to get the temperament of whether the city council was interested in spending some money without trying to correct the irrigation systems, which is going to be a huge amount. But in partnering on the fence and maybe the warning track, you know, the removable mound would need to be necessary so that the field wouldn't just be restricted for baseball, but also Title IX issues for softball. You know, I had that one given to me by council next to me. But the Pacheco brothers have indicated that they could renovate four fields. I don't know if it's a good quote in competitive, but for about 112,000, all four fields could be, you know, renovated in terms
To what extent? What does that mean?
I know. And John has the, the breakdown, you know, in terms of what that means.
But does that include irrigation?
No, no, it doesn't include. I just said, indicated that. It doesn't include the irrigation.
Well, you said renovate. I don't know exactly what renovate
Yeah. So we're talking about bringing the turf back into safety. Go ahead, John.
Okay. So basically what we wanted to do is, we totally agree about the fields. I mean, obviously we're maintenance, our name's on it, we're embarrassed as everybody else is about it. So we've been trying to get quotes and get someone to give us some prices on it. And really, it's really extensive project. So we're thinking about 150,000. This is about 120,000. It's pretty much to get some sand and loam and level out the field, slit seed, get rid of, first they're going to, they're going to go and they're going to get rid of all the weeds, all the broadleaf, everything. They're going to spray. It's going to take a couple of applications. Then they'll come through and they're going to put some sand and loam, like they're saying 500 yards and level all four fields out. Get rid of everything, get it all flattened out. Then they'll slit seed, they'll, they'll, they'll bulk seed and then slit seed areas that they can and bulk seed areas where we're really going to be thick with the sand and the loam. And then they'll fertilize. And the one thing about doing something like this, and since we're talking the, the money and all that, is this is something that's great for this year, but this is the type of activity and maintenance that would have to be done probably a couple of years in a row at 120,000 for each year. Then it would slowly recede. If we kept maintaining it, it would be less and less each year to maybe it would be 40,000 a year. Well, we'd come in and do this and make these fields look nice each year instead of sitting here doing this one-time thing and saying, hey, we just spent 120,000. Why do the fields, why do they, two years later, they look bad again? Well, we only did it once. This would be part of general maintenance that needs to be done each year, that needs to be implemented along with our 180,000 that we have. The catch 22 about this is we spend all this money and I'm one of those believers that we're still in a drought. And if we get drought restrictions and now all of a sudden we can't water up there and we just spent 120,000, now, now what just happened? So, you know, it's just, we have a plan. There's all, as Gary said, we're here just to discuss it. There's different levels, different things we can do. The fence isn't a big deal, guys. It's, it's the irrigation, the redesign. We have to have somebody design the irrigation to redo the, it'll have to be completely redesigned. That's the problem, not the fence. It's easy to say, let's put a fence up. It's 50,000 to do the irrigation. It's probably 10 to 20 to do the designs. And I can say that with confidence because we've been, we've been doing this. We've been getting prices for this. So, you know, just getting the fields back so that we don't have squirrel holes. And, and then if we spend this money, we spend 3,600 a year on ground squirrel control. Do we double that? Do we do better ground squirrel control to protect our investment? Those are the types of things we need to talk about too. Annual maintenance, not, it's great to say, let's spend all this money to do these one-time fixes for the park, but that's all it is. How do we keep the How do we keep the park looking good year in and year out, playable year in and year out? Those are the types of solutions we think of in the maintenance department.
Julie?
So, a question, John. I hear the concern that you came in with what you thought was kind of a minimal project and something you could afford, and we could get it done for next season. And we're thinking, you know, maybe pie in the sky. On the other hand, there has to be a logical sequence. So I guess I'm wondering if, is it absolutely necessary to redesign the irrigation before the fence goes in, or could that be done after the fence goes in? I mean, it's not gonna be that wide of a concrete strip.
It'll have to be done, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. It'll have to be done as a project. That's why we need the blueprint, so that it can be designed along with the fence, the warning track. And then we don't necessarily have to redesign the irrigation outside of it, but then if we don't, it's just gonna be dirt in no time. Might look like it lives right now, but we don't necessarily have to. But we would have to have a plan similar to some of the plans that I draw, where I will do stub valves up, stub areas up for a future irrigation. We do it all the time around here. But yes, the irrigation would have to be done before the fence gets in, because otherwise the grass would just die. It's not, the placement of the heads and the way they are, they affect every system. It's just the way the park was designed. It's not like Field One. Field One I redesigned years ago, and we redid the infill grass area. I added two valves that only watered the infill grass area. We redid that ourselves in-house. So when you guys asked to have that dirt, all I had to do is disconnect those two valves that didn't affect any other system. That's why we were able to do it. This is a complete different story.
So I guess the follow-on to that is, we need to understand a little better about what's absolutely necessary just to get a fence in there, and what is, would be nice to have, but not necessary?
Sure.
And get kind of a path forward where we can get a start on a project, even if it's not the whole thing. And then we look at, how do we build on that? Because realistically, if Clayton Valley Little League wants to make Clayton Community Park their home field, fixing one field isn't gonna do it. We're gonna have to do the whole park. And frankly, the rest of the people who use it deserve that. But we have to figure out how to afford it, and we have to figure out how to water it. And that's not gonna be easy. So I don't know what the minimum standard is that you need for water, and whether that comes even close to what our current restrictions have been. I know they lifted them somewhat, but we've still got realistic restrictions. Part of it is the cost of the water.
Well, we're budgeted, in that budget that Gary had mentioned, $77,000 was for water. That's kind of skewed a little bit, because the reality is, it costs about $120,000 up there for water.
Right.
So if we were to actually water those fields and they were to look really good, it's not $77,000. $77,000 is budgeted because we're still, we're still monitoring our water, we're not watering as much as we would. So there's, that's not, that's not really a true number. If we were to have a maintenance plan where we were renovating the fields each year and update, we'd have to have more water on the fields. It would cost more money.
I think that's what we need, is a breakdown, one field versus all four, one field, two field, you know, kind of figure that out. What level can we get by with versus what we'd really like to have? And what's that ongoing cost of maintenance? I think we need to have some of that to really evaluate where we can go with this. I mean, I think it's a great idea, but as I said, I'd like to see us do more with that park and make it be what it can be, but we have to be realistic. And I don't know where the city's gonna come up with another quarter of a million dollars a year for water and maintenance for the park. I mean, it's, $250,000 a year's a lot of money. There are a lot of other things we could be spending it on in the city, so we've gotta balance our priorities and figure out what we can accomplish. And if we have to find another way to fund it, then maybe we ought to explore that, too, but that's our job.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we took the small item. We went way out here, but, and I think that's appropriate, because now we've had the discussion, and we're marching back to really the essence, is that is the city council willing to allow this field to go to baseball, you know, purposes for a permanent fence? And if your instruction to us is, yes, we're leaning in that direction, then we can take it back from staff and bring back to you what that means, a partnership on the fence, the concrete strip, the warning track, and what that means in terms of bringing that field back to playing level. Don't worry about outside the fence. You know, for instance, that could actually, could be a really cool frisbee course. They don't care what they're walking on, you know, you've got those things, they, you know, they can throw the frisbee, and they're standing in dirt. That's fine, too. But really, the item tonight was to get your reaction on, is it, does it make sense to allow that field to go to the sport of baseball? And if so, then we'll bring that back down and we'll work with Kevin and others in terms of that.
Julie, you have some...
And we ought to figure that when it does come back, we ought to post it, advertise it just a little bit more, so that other folks in town know what's going on, that it's not just baseball, and maybe the soccer folks feeding into that discussion. I don't want to be accused of making a decision behind closed doors or, you know, without letting folks know that we're even considering a slight change of use up there. And, you know, that's something that, maybe the mayor for his final column can put in there, that we're looking at this as a possibility.
He's got a lot of people to thank.
Well, there is that, yeah.
Not you.
Well, maybe the next mayor can write it in there or something, to let people know that we're talking about it, anyway.
So I think that's what we were talking about when I said, we just, it's great information. We need to get more information to come back from us, you know, and you've heard, you know, the comments, and I think we've given you some direction. I think that's all we can do, and bring it back to...
Okay, so you're saying, yes, favorably look at the permanent fencing of that field, and bring back to you what that would take a look like in terms of what we could, what staff would need to have for resources to get that into playing condition?
Correct.
Great. That includes a storage container?
I mean, again, you know, we hate to build something permanent that doesn't look good, you know? I mean, the CBCA shed really looks nice, it's in line to that. And again, we'd like to see it come back, I think, you know, design costs, and who's gonna pay for it? You know, I mean, it's one thing that will store it, but who's gonna pay to have it built, you know, and it needs, usually they need electricity and they need lights, you know, I mean...
No. I mean, we usually use shipping containers.
Yeah.
And you can put a facing on it.
Yeah.
I mean, just to be very clear, again, Little League's not, doesn't want to build, you know...
But the city wants something pretty.
No, I understand that.
So we don't want a storage container.
So you could put a facing on it with the storage containers, you can put facing on them, but that's, and again, I get that staff's gonna want perfect continuity, and some of the council may want that. Reality is, Little League can't spend $200,000 building a shed like is down combined with the bathrooms.
And we understand, but again, it's gonna come up, if you're gonna put a storage shed there, or two of them together, to make it big enough, okay? Who's gonna put the face on? Who's gonna put the foundation in? Okay? Who's gonna do all this, and who's gonna pay for it? I mean, so, you know, that's what we still need to know.
If it's not the Taj Mahal, Little League is willing to help and do it. We've already done that with John and Gary down below on the temporary, and we've done that at the high school, we've done that at Mount Diablo Elementary.
Yeah, we know that.
It may not be the prettiest thing in the world, but it's functional.
Yeah, I think where staff was coming from is not so much that we absolutely desire that, but we wanted that to be brought up for discussion, because if the storage container is sufficient and the council's acceptable that, most people don't, in the public, they don't weigh in until they're walking by that thing, and they're gonna go, oh my gosh, you know, how did that get in here?
How'd the Matson line thing get there?
That's right. It was dropped in by helicopter.
So Howard?
Yes, Keith? Yeah, I think I did hear that certainly there's an interest in pursuing this, but again, a phased approach, trying to meet the minimum requirement or request from the Little League, and the council is also looking at maybe while we're up there, let's take a look at improving other fields as well. The initial request was just for Field Three, but we're hearing there's certainly needs for other field work as well. And not that we want to go that route yet, but it'd be nice, while you're doing that design work, to come back with, and what would it take to really begin to turn that park into a usable facility?
Well, thank you, Councilmember. We get that, you know, we just didn't want in the public to think that we're cherry-picking, you know, this particular field, and you weren't considering the rest of them.
And timing-wise, as John knows, Little League starts up in February, and, you know, our season actually, we do practice, and then the season starts first part of April or end of March, usually March, last week of March, is our opening day. If Little League and the city were going to do something this year, you know, if we're doing a phased approach of, hey, what can we do to do this versus the grandios, then we're gonna need to move quickly. If it's not gonna happen this year, then Little League moves on and, you know, we deal with it. But just to keep in mind, when we talk about bringing it back to council, the sooner the better, from Little League's perspective. Now, John, schedule-wise and putting it all together, that I get might be problematic.
And thank you, and you and I both know that, but this gentleman down here at the end, you approved on the consent calendar, the tree replacement. Who do you think does that? You know, as people look at other communities and say, gee, why can't Clayton have that? It really gets down to, you know, a matter of resources, a matter of the number of staff that we have. I think most people in town don't really realize, and they're gonna be paying their property tax bill, but as one pays their property tax bill, and you folks know, we've said this all the time, that assessed valuation side of that property tax bill, we get 6.69% of that. So go do the math on that.
Of the 1%.
Of the 1%.
The 1%.
That's on the right side of your property tax bill. You can say, how much money goes to Clayton? 6.69% of that, the right side of that bill, goes to Clayton. And that's what we function on and operate on. Anyway, thank you very much for the dialogue, we appreciate that. We'll work now, going back to how can we accommodate the Clayton Valley Little League's request, and what other ingredients we need in there to say we're good with it. And we'll bring it back to you as soon as we can.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you for coming out and telling us your wants, desires, needs, you know, it's all good. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks, Johnson.
Good to see you. You're gonna call me? You got money?
I'm gonna say you're a saint, though, you say it later.
Aw, jeez.
Nice!
That was my friend.
By the way, Casey, Casey, thank you for the great program you're running. My kids didn't get to play in that gym, but my grandkids are, and they're playing in your basketball program and having a ball. Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna move on, since we've given staff direction, and hope to hear back from them soon. Okay, item number D was continued consideration of Mayor's Gella's request for a city initiate a feasibility study for construction of a second public restroom in Clayton Town Center. And we thought, because the last time we had the discussion, we were, we didn't have two of you here.
We weren't at full strength.
Yeah, and so we didn't have a good discussion on it, so we thought we would just, you know, postpone that and bring it back tonight.
Rehash?
Rehash, well, not rehash, because, you know, you have some input on that, I'm sure, you know, and Jim wasn't here either, right? So Julie, you have a comment?
Yeah, I do. Similar to the discussion we just had, I really think we don't have enough information. I think we need to get more information. I've done a good bit of looking online. I mentioned at our last meeting that I had found a website that gave me numbers anywhere from a little over $200,000 to as much as $400,000 to put in a prefab facility that would be close to what I was guessing was the capacity we would need to meet those 22 days of special events. Having looked at that, and then found a few more websites online that talk about how you size a facility for a crowd and what you need to plan for, I have realized that the sizing that I was looking at is nowhere near as big as what you really need for a crowd of 3,000, not to mention, you know, crowds of 10,000. And so it would need to be double or triple the size I was looking at. So I really think we need to ask staff to come back with, to do a little bit more research, and I'll give them the stack of stuff I've printed out. But a lot of it requires actually contacting these companies and getting quotes, and they're not real timely in getting back to you. I had happened to chance into one site that gave me some information, but I'm not sure that that's even relevant, given the much more consistent information I've gotten on how many stalls you need to plan on for the number of people. So I really think, before we go any further, we ought to get a little bit more information, and we ought to prioritize what our capital investments need to be, because it may be that we think a ball field enhancement is worth more than an extra bathroom in the downtown. I mean, I think we need to weigh our priorities.
Question for you, Julie. When you were looking at this, the size was what that you were looking at? Adding one or two for women and one or two for men?
I was figuring doubling what we've got right now, thinking that that might reduce the lines enough, but that was still, you'd have to replace the entire fixture, because it's a unit. And you'd have to do the underground, the sewer work, and the water connections and all of that, and that came in, anywhere, depending on the design, between 200 and 400,000, in the limited ones that I was able to actually get prices.
And were you talking about replacing the bathroom we have and expanding it?
Yes.
That's what you guys talked about last meeting?
No, no, we didn't. That was one of the many, many...
That was one of the options, but the other option, just to replace what we have is close to, or to get another one of what we have, is pretty close to 200,000.
Right, because Howard talked about maybe over at the corral, or at the...
People don't cross the street to use the porta-potties. They're not gonna cross the street to use a bathroom.
People will cross the street to use a bathroom, and they will not even go next door to use a porta-potty, and that's fact. You know, people, we ask them all the time.
I think we need a better handle on it.
Well, and I don't disagree, that's why I brought it up. My question was to make consideration, to bring to staff, find out where the possibilities would be, okay? We have the garbage company that donates a couple of thousand dollars a year just on that, and that could maybe go towards maintenance of it. We're always concerned about maintaining it. I don't think we're gonna ever build a facility to take care of 10,000 people walking down Main Street, okay? But, you know, we have, you know, 2,000 to 3,000 people in the park, and it's amazing, you know, if we, there always is a line, but before the end of the concert, they're gone, so they must have gotten in. So by doubling the size or creating what we have, we would not have a line, maybe we'd have a line for two minutes, but people would be able to get in and out quicker. And I think that if we had a real facility across the street, that we would have half the park going over there. And that's my opinion, but, you know, and there might be other places that we could do it also. Another suggestion that came up for the guys that weren't here is, you know, I thought that, you know, if, again, this is if, 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 you know, if we have that commercial strip that's being built that'll end pretty close to where the historical society is, you know, if we went into conjunction with the builder at that time and said, hey, you know what? You're gonna have to have a bathroom to service that building, or individual bathrooms. What happens if you put a public facility at the end, you know, which would be basically, you know, and across, again, they would have to go across the street to do that. I mean, it's not ideal for the park, but it would be a way of somebody else picking up a tab and getting another set of bathrooms in there. And even if we don't do this, that's a good thought process, you know, when we're going to that park, maybe they can do something like that, you know, by putting in, you know, some bathrooms at the end of that strip, and having nothing to do with the park, you know, and being a third set of bathrooms for downtown. You know, little towns, you know, when you go around little towns, you know, go up the... A little towns, you know, when you go around little towns, you know, go up north and, you know, they, they do have, you know, a, a public bathroom by a park, okay? You know, we, we have one that we built up at the community park, right? So I mean, it's not something that we, we haven't supplied and we don't need to do. And this was just a feasibility study, you know, to jump in and just to get some more information, to see what the cost would be and what it would take to fund it and, and to build it. So that was the whole purpose of bringing it to council, just to throw it back out to staff and see what we can find out.
Do you think it would be worthwhile to at least investigate what something like that would cost?
And if we have a location.
Yeah. And then where would be the best location?
Correct. And I mean, that's all it would go. And then, of course, we're going to prioritize where, you know, what comes first, chicken or the egg, you know, whatever, you know, and where the funds are going to come from. And it's just a matter of, you know, it's a city. There's a lot of things going on at the same time, and we need to be able to multitask and, and, and come back with some answers. So that was my, my whole thing about doing that. So comments? Or, Gens, do you like the idea? No?
Um, I, how much, how much staff time are we, did you guys talk about, are we, is this a, just a very cursory thing where staff's going to come back and say there's only two potential locations?
Exactly.
Or the corral cannot work because it's too close to the creek and we don't have the infrastructure? What, I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, on the one hand, I don't want to, I don't want to create, you know, another boondoggle of staff having to go and, and spend tremendous amounts of time on something if, from a, you know, standpoint of a policy decision, we, we decide, you know, it's not needed or, you know, it is. I mean, I, I, I struggle with twenty-three days or, you know, however many, ten concerts, really, that's, that's where, I mean, for, for Oktoberfest and all the, and Labor Day and all that stuff, you know.
They're used.
They're, they're used, but they're, you can always bring in porta-potties. We always bring in porta-potties for Oktoberfest and all that. It, it really is coming down to, in my mind, ten, ten concerts or fourteen concerts if you count Thursdays, but I don't think Thursdays has the, you know, the, the, the need beyond what we have. So I guess from my standpoint, maybe before we have staff spend time, we have a policy decision up here of whether it's worth going forward with that. I get what you're saying because frankly, you and Julie are the ones that get the crap on you.
Yeah. Let me tell you, that's, that's more.
But you know what? I think that's fixed. I think they've actually got the plumbing fixed on that.
And maybe that'll help.
And the last concert, it was much, much better. We didn't need to do anything except replace the toilet paper.
And the pipe that exploded?
But, and it was fine. That was before the last concert.
So here's, here's one quick question.
It got fixed before the last concert.
Our current bathroom in the Grove Park is maintained through the Grove Park District, Texas.
Right.
If we built a restroom over in the corral, let's just say hypothetically it's feasible, is that within the Grove Park District and such that we could do it? Or is that going to add another burden of cost to maintain? Because the worst thing you can have is, you know, going out and having a crappy bathroom, so to speak. So I, I think, so Gary, do you know if, if, is the, if we built something at the corral or Howard's other alternative was over where the new development is proposed, can that be folded into somehow the, the Grove? Or is that something that we would have to take out of the general fund and find?
My, my initial reaction, and that's a fair question, it would be, no, it could not be funded by the Grove because the Grove indicated the, the restrooms that would be typical for the, the park. And I think that's what we have found, is the restrooms typically accommodate the, the needs of the public, except for these special events types of things.
Gary, wasn't, wasn't the corral built with the Grove at the same time as part of that project?
No.
Was it?
No. And so it would be general fund. So, and I think the other thing that if, if you're wanting staff to, to do some, some work on this, I think we need to get an idea of, of the size of the restroom we're talking about. Are you, are you saying take the existing public restroom and just double it? Because then you're, then you're going from, you know, three, three stalls to, you know, six stalls.
To duplicate it, I think, not double, not double it, duplicate it, which would double it, okay? But not, not, not there.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily same spot, you know?
No, I, I understand, yeah, because in the same spot, basically, if you were to double that in the same spot, then you would encroach into that plaza area in front of it and you're moving closer to the, we can do that. But I, I, we would need some to, you know, understanding that, oh gosh, we do want to come back with just, you know, doubling the size of the park at a separate location or whatnot, say, well, no, I think we need six stalls or something like that. So, but no, I think the answer would be putting a restroom outside the park. I don't think you could draw the nexus for the funding by that special district.
Well, and quite frankly, even along with that, I don't think there's probably a nexus to any future development either to require that. I just, I don't see where that would come from. Based on planning experience, I, I don't think we could, I don't think we could make that a requirement at all. So, but that, that said, you know, there might be a design that would fit in the existing space without it being overwhelmingly large for the park that would double the capacity, which might be enough, but I'm, I'm reluctant. I really think, you know, okay, the lines are there, they're not that long, they're consistent, but, you know, they're good-natured, everybody seems to get along just fine, and as long as it functions, we're good. So it's not a top priority for me.
And I wouldn't feel it's a top priority. It's just I thought it would be handy for us to have because we do get questions about it when that need comes up, to have an idea of what it would cost, because typically residents don't think about the cost.
Sure.
They just think about, how do we immediately get some relief here? And, and when you kind of throw back at them, well, but that would cost X amount of dollars and is it worth that just for a few extra days assistance with this issue? You know, we do have other solutions. Those, many of the vents that drive that type of activity have, provide their own additional, you know, porta-potties and, and space. But it just gives us an idea, and again, we don't need to spend a lot of time on it. It's, it's not an urgency. We, we probably have already reduced the need with the additional work done on the current bathroom. But it just gives, gives us a ballpark for future reference and not an extensive estimate with a lot of time spent.
I even found one online when I was looking that was, looked like the one we have there. So I may have stumbled on the original supplier's website. And I didn't bring down the sheet of printouts that I made.
And they were out, it was, the prefab just itself was, ten years ago, was one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand. It was out in Nevada.
Right. And I think that's where this site came from. American Restroom Association or something like that. This was one of their vendors that they had on their, their site, but I found one that looks exactly like what we have. I mean, even the trim on the front is the same. So I thought, hmm, wonder if that's a picture of our building?
They might have, they might have taken a...
But I, I don't know. But anyway, I, I, I think that makes sense. It's just to look at it.
Yeah.
So you and Keith are in agreement with Howard that we at least have staff give us a cursory initial run-through?
Very quick look at what the cost would be to double the capacity of the existing on that same site.
Yep.
And placement, right? Is that part of it?
Yeah, it might have to move back to where the, where the trash cans are stored.
Yeah, yeah.
And utilize that corner a little more effectively.
Yeah, got it.
But, you know, we, we got to figure that out. But I want to know what the dollars are before I...
We pick up the other one and bring it up to the park. All right. All right, I'm, I'm content.
Certainly not my top priority.
And I'm just, just think, trying to think here, is there a spot close, you know, between the, the existing restroom and the, the Blue Store?
Sam's.
Well, I'm dating myself at the Blue Store.
Village Market.
To, you know, we put the porta-potties across the, the way.
Put them there.
Can you put for the concert season, is there, just, we could put a pad and, and do two decent porta-potties that are female-only?
Yeah.
Because men are pigs, and, and I get that. And, you know, if we did that and we locked them up, you know, during the week and they only use there, and it was, that would, I mean, yes, we get men's lines, you know, on, on a couple of occasions, but it's the, it's the women that, the, the real issue is coming from.
But the thing is, if you put a porta-potty there, you have to put a handicap on it. And you can't say, okay, this is only for women, okay? You just can't do that.
Yeah, we can't. This is America.
No, you can't, okay? So, but the thing is, and I talked to Sam.
Who says you can't do that? Because we already have a handicap for the men and you could do that. That's bullcrap.
Hey, I talked to Sam. I talked to Sam about putting him over there.
I think this is degenerating. We've given direction. We're going to be here all night.
He's asking for a price anyhow. But if I, if I may, there actually is new state law that says if you have a single stall and, you know, with, you know, you, you go in and you lock it behind you, that has to be universal.
Right.
Right. Okay.
And signed appropriately.
All right, and it could be for men or women. Okay, so we're going to, that's off to staff and we're going to go to item number nine, council items, limited requests and directives for future meetings. Anybody?
Corporation actually signed.
Nope, nope, nope. You don't have anything like that.
First time I saw it, I go, what?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to recess the city council meeting right now to go until, let's see, may I, until after, we're going to, gosh, recess the city council meeting while we go into the conclusion of the Clayton Financial Authority meeting, and then we'll reconvene that when we're done. And since this is the same board, can, is there anything?
Here you go.
We have the minutes.
Yeah, okay.
Audited financial statement.
I call it to order.
Okay, thank you. I call to audit the Clayton Financial Authority for November first, two thousand and sixteen and note that all members are present. There are no closed sessions. It will go to the consent calendar. Can I move for approval?